Call the Berkeley Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, February twenty second, two thousand twenty-two to order. Everybody stand to pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I like having a lot of people say that in here, that's good. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bardis.
Here.
Commissioner Dolan.
Here.
Commissioner Kempner.
Here.
Commissioner Patterson.
Here.
Commissioner Petrowski is excused, Commissioner Stern is excused, Commissioner Richardson.
President.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
And Commissioner Kepelinski is excused. So you have a quorum. Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair. Do we need to have a vote to excuse the absences?
We have done that in the past.
Okay.
I doesn't, you know, I think we should, so.
All right.
I move to excuse the absences.
Support.
Commissioner Patterson, all right. Bardis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now approval, need a motion for approval of the minutes from January twenty-fifth, probably supposed to be two thousand twenty-two. Everybody's doing that.
Move to approve.
Mr. Chair, should should the agenda be approved before the minutes?
I'm sorry, did I skip over the agenda? My apology. How about we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Okay.
Bardis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Okay, now everybody's waiting for this approval of the minutes.
Move to approve.
Okay, second?
Second.
Who had the, Dolan had the, oh, Kempner.
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 And Bardis.
Bardis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Okay, at this point in time, um, we will listen to any comments that any of the citizens here might have on items not on tonight's agenda. You'll all get a chance to, uh, speak if you wish during the items as we're discussing those. So this is, uh, for items not on the agenda, step up to the podium, please, state your name, place of residence, prior to starting your comments, and you have three minutes to speak. So if anybody else wants to say anything. Okay, seeing nobody rushing up to the mic, we'll move along. And I skipped over, I'm not taking these off as I go, I apologize, skipped over communications. We, we had a number of communications tonight.
Yeah, you had a number of communications, um, you have the planning and zoning news before you, the Michigan Association of Planning Magazine, um, and there's a letter from five eights, um, on DDA design guidelines. All other correspondence that's before you, um, that was on the podium tonight relates to each of the, to one of the cases that's on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. So why don't we get into our item number one of old business?
So this site plan was before you, um, back in October, um, the main change that's happened is, um, previously it was proposed to be, um, medical office, um, that requires a higher degree, uh, requires more parking per square foot. Um, the applicant has revised it, um, and to just an office use, um, so they no longer needed shared parking, um, with the, with the place of worship that's adjacent. You'll note, um, where there's a letter from Carla Wartman, a letter from Hubbell, Roth and Clark, and a letter from, um, the Department of Public Works. We, um, provided a cover letter, um, and wanted just to note a couple of things from each review. Um, in terms of the planning review, wanted to, um, note that there's a five-foot, eight-inch, foot, eight-inch-high block wall proposed on the eastern property line as the buffer in between. Um, there's a need to confirm the transparency, the number of windows, there's a certain amount, I think it's thirty percent, that's required for the Greenfield District, it appears to have met that, but there's not a confirmation on the site plan. Carla Wartman Associates noted that the applicant needs to consider additional landscaping, and that was part of the review that was, um, by your previous, um, community development director, Aaron Schluto, and I believe that was discussed when the applicant was here in October. Um, and that's something that we would encourage you to talk to the applicant about if you feel that more is needed. There is not a specific standards in the zoning ordinance, it's only whether they meet the standards for approval, um, for site plan. They, we need clarification on where the stone veneer is located, and, um, also for the applicant to show exterior appliances, air conditioners, generators on the site plan to ensure compliance with section one-three-eight dash seven-three. In the Hubbell, Roth and Clark, um, letter, um, we just wanted to note for you that, um, a road commission permit is required, um, from Oakland County, there may be permits that are needed from the Water Resources Commission, and the maintenance agreement needs to be approved by the city attorney and reviewed by the city. DPW had several comments, some of them the same as Hubbell, Roth and Clark, um, but also that a traffic control plan and sequence of construction needs to be submitted to cover right-of-way activities prior to a pre-construction meeting, and then a construction schedule needs to be provided with all dates and durations of major work items. Also, um, Fire Inspector Pete Kelly has signed and approved the plans. If you note his letter back from October, he had written a letter about the two site plans together, noting one had rear doors, this particular one, and the one at three, four, seven, six, um, did not. Um, there's nothing in the building or the fire code that says it has to be one way or another, um, but that was noted. So in summary, Planning Commission needs to make a determination about whether additional landscaping is needed, um, and if there are any approvals for site plan that are debated tonight, we recommend, um, conditions be road commission approval, um, that the parcel combination is finalized, and that all the issues in the review letters, um, cited in our letter are taken care of.
Point, point of information, just, just for the, so that the record's clear, you're referring here to PSP zero-two-two-one, the twenty-four-hundred Greenfield?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and we'll discuss the other applications subsequently?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, is the applicant here? I believe he is, I see him in the audience.
I'm Tim Vogt, the architect of record, um, for the both developments. Um, there's a few corrections that I'd like to make in the statements that were previously noted. On our title sheet, we call the building to be a fifty-fifty, fifty percent medical, fifty percent office. That way we do meet the parking requirements for the lot, we don't have to get into a shared parking with the adjacent property. As far as mechanical units and those items are noted on the elevations, it's on the backside, they're not rooftop units, they're on the back of the buildings, they're flush with the wall, and they would not be seen because of the screening that we're incorporating. So that's some of our things that we have there. As far as with meeting the road commission requirements, that's all part of, once you get under construction, yes, we have to submit that, that information to meet the requirements, so that's there. As far as the stone, um, for this building, it is called out on the elevations that it's a color rail stack stone, and that's a stone veneer. I mean, I can't, I know on the other building, there is a discrepancy, and we'll, we'll address that when we talk about that building. As far as the landscaping, yes, we did meet with the prior planner, and we did add landscaping that she felt was approvable. As for the windows, we did increase, um, from our prior, I mean, it's not at thirty percent, but it's just, just below. But we're asking for a little leniency there, since it is an office, and most offices you'd have stuff against windows, so you'd be looking at back of desks through clear windows, so that's not a good view.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, is there other things you want to address?
Well, I want to go around and see what all the commissioners have to say. Just so everybody knows, uh, we're looking at the, um, this is a twenty-four-hundred Greenfield project. They look very similar, so, so, so everybody has the right plans in front of them. So, any comments from the planning commissioners?
I have a question. Um, so you say that it's fifty percent medical and fifty percent office building. I guess are you splitting it exactly half and half? How are we ensuring?
Yes, that's.
Besides just saying, oh yeah, if I make it this way, I can get less parking.
That would have to be in the type of businesses that move in, we have to make sure that it's fifty-fifty, otherwise that doesn't, we wouldn't meet our, meet our parking, otherwise we'd have to take the medical totally out of the equation, and we wouldn't meet our parking. But I think the owner wants to have some medical there since we're right across the street from the Oakland County medical facility, that's there.
Can I add something on that? Um, just recently, um, the Aquatotz development, um, had to go through a site plan amendment because they faced an issue like this. They wanted to go from a sit-down restaurant to a carryout restaurant, and then add some different uses in a multi-tenant building. So when they applied for building permits or building licenses, that parking is immediately flagged and reviewed by the Community Development Department, and then all building permits were stopped until a site plan amendment could happen, and that was an administrative site plan that happened, I was going to tell you about that at the end in the community development report, but I'll tell you now, um, because, um, it was a less intensive use. So if that, there's a check within the city's bureaucracy to make sure that that didn't happen, um, that they would put in more medical office than they had, um, capacity for.
So that's, that's reviewed as the, um, individual permits are, uh, applied for, for the tenants, the, the.
The individual building permits, and then over the life of the building, the individual business licenses.
Okay, so there's a flag and a check for that?
Yes.
And those are administratively reviewed?
Those are administratively reviewed.
And the, the discrepancy, if this had been a hundred percent medical, the parking shortage would be two spaces?
No, six spaces.
Six, six.
Six, that we, we did approach the, the adjacent property owner, the, the church that's there, and they were, they're asking for a whole new parking lot, which we didn't find.
Of course.
Feasible.
Okay.
I do have a couple. Um, I am, made a short list here. Um, I, I also had a question in regards to the separation and the setback. Um, I think that's something that in the future we need to look into, um, because it seems to abide by the separation from another building.
Yes.
If it was worded as a setback, it would not be in compliance. Um, I think that's something is, as we go forward, revising or updating the zoning, we, we'll, we need to take a look at that. Um, I had a, I, I was confused about the building, the vinyl, I think it was, I have white and gray on here.
Yes, it's a hardy plank siding, yes.
So there's, is it two-toned?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, two tones, it's.
Okay.
Add a little more interest than just a blank wall.
Gotcha, okay.
Did ask at the, I guess it was October, it doesn't seem like that long ago, uh, we asked to, uh, do some, a little, give a little something on the back, because it was pretty.
And I, I also noted in, in the elevation, you know, there's a dash line.
Yes.
That indicates the, uh, stone wall, or not stone, but split-face block wall that's there, so you're, it's not a very tall building.
Right, right. Um, the next one I have is drainage. Um, it looks like to me, looking at the topo, it looks like the drainage kind of flows east to west. Um, and obviously the screen wall would block up some of the drainage. Um, I know in past things that I've worked on, we've, we've showed, um, drainage holes literally in the bottom of the, the screen wall. I don't know if that's something to consider.
No, the, it's actually north to south is your drainage, because it's, it's a swell behind the building, and I believe if you look at it, there's two collection points.
But I'm looking at the neighbors to the east of you.
Looking at the existing drainage, what it's doing right now.
Yeah, that's correct, and it looks like it's, those houses on Elwood look like they are flowing, overland flowing to the west and to the existing swales that have cut across the property. So when you put the screen wall up, it would block that path.
There you get into an interesting condition where you have adjacent properties draining onto adjacent properties, and that's not, I don't know where, but we can, uh, provide openings for flow of water, if that's necessary.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just looking out for the people on Elwood.
No, that's not uncommon.
So we don't create drainage issues in the backyards of their, their lots. Um, that screen, and I wasn't here when you guys were, came before us for the first time. That screen wall sits within the easement, the utility easement back there. I know there's, that's just overhead utilities. Is that something, I guess it's more of an internal question, is a screen wall sitting on, within an existing utility easement, the existing utility easement is being used as overhead lines? Someday, I don't know if that's a use concern, or if they ever do put the lines underground?
Um, I would say that the easement probably has some language about, um, associated with it, I'm assuming it's a DTE easement, because it's overhead, um, that they would then, um, I would say that is at the property owner or the, the applicant's peril, for lack of better word, um, that DT would probably come in and take down the wall, or, or, yeah.
Just something I had noted, um, that I, I saw. Um, the trans, I, I think we noted to show transformers, um, and then the dumpster, and I wondered maybe if the transformer could go down by the dumpster and maybe throw a little bit of landscaping down, around in that corner, down to the very southeast corner, um, much like you did on the other one. I like what you had done on the, the, um, the thirty-four sixty-two Greenfield. Um, and then my last comment was photometrics, just along the east property line, just to make sure that they're pointed down and cut off.
Yep.
So we're not impacting anybody next door. That's all I get.
Anybody else?
Are we going to discuss the, uh, the issue of separation versus setback?
Well, I think for the record, we should have a short discussion on it, and it was brought up already, thank you very much, and I had a question earlier, but I think for the record, um, we should have a discussion, and I think it's something we have to look at in the future.
So there's a table, um, in, for bulk and regulations in the Greenfield District, section one-three-eight-three-nine-seven. It's item two, and it says setbacks, but then, um, it says the new development is, and then it gives an example, it's, in this case, it's a building, um, between thirty-one and forty. It, it's a building thirty-one to forty feet in height, next to a single family, ne- um, next to a building between thirty-one and forty feet in height, then the required separation is at least fifteen feet. And so that separation is not a setback, it's a separation between buildings. So there is an inherent contradiction in the heading of the table and what's in the table. However, looking back in Ms. Schluto's letter before, um, that separation was not, it was interpreted as a separate, was clearly laid out as a separation between buildings, not the setback, because if you look at the rear yard setback, it's fourteen point, fourteen.
Fourteen eight.
Eight inches, yeah. Um, so, um.
It would be exceed fifteen, uh, if you look at where the nearest building is, right?
Right, right, or, so, or from a single-family house, the thirty feet, because I think they're required to have a twenty-foot setback in the rear yard, based on that, so they would, they would more than meet that.
So it's measured from the house, the residence, and not the garage?
I think it's, it's from whatever, um, yeah, from a single-family house.
Yeah, I think the garages are far enough away also, and I think that's, this is anomaly, this doesn't occur anywhere in our ordinance.
No, this is the only, this is, this is the only.
Yeah, so that's something we'll have to deal with amongst ourselves. Now, you know, for anybody who doesn't quite get that, there's a difference between a setback and a separation. Like, if in your home, in your, where you live, if you have a forty, fifty-foot lot, or even seventy-five, a hundred, whatever, you need a minimal fifteen-feet setbacks combined, minimum five on one side, minimum ten on the other, or any combination, just so you have a minimum of five, but you need a total of fifteen. But what you, what we're really doing is that your neighbors, you need to be fifteen feet separation from your neighbor's house. Has nothing to do with setbacks, and that's a, a fine distinction, but it is a distinction. But since this is the only place this shows up, I think if you would make a note as we get into rewriting, reworking our ordinances, I think we would, I think we'd rather see that as a setback, we're not going to charge them for that.
It was a point that we made, it was per the district and the, the prior planning, that was an item that we went through at the very beginning, otherwise we wouldn't be where we are, so.
Understood, and, yeah, and I don't know why, I don't recall or know why it was written as a separation, or why there's that inconsistency on the chart, but that's something we'll deal with, but that won't affect this project, so.
And personally, I, I would like to see that dealt with sooner than later, because, I mean, it's under the label of setbacks, right? So that would lead me to believe that everything that follows is about a setback.
Everything else is a setback.
Um, but if that's how she, she determined it with the applicant, then, yeah.
And I, I would note that even under an alternative interpretation, uh, the rear wall is fourteen feet, eight inches, that's pretty darn close to fifteen feet, so if, if we were to, not, not to take the interpretation that we are taking, we would probably still be pretty close to, uh, uh, substantial compliance.
Building number two is much closer.
Yeah.
To the property line, so, okay.
I mean, you know, I'm making that remark, just, I, I don't want, I don't want this neighborhood to be disadvantaged by an ambiguity in the ordinance, and I don't, I don't think it is being that disadvantaged.
This side of the table?
No. I think you already covered them.
I have a couple, um. Glad you got rid of the parking agreement, that's good, I mean, we've done a lot of them in the city, but they can be an issue, especially if they want all-new parking lot, so. Your dimensions across the site add up to a hundred and thirty-three feet, four inches, and I may or may not have mentioned that last time, but they still do, so.
I'll have to go back.
Find your error somewhere.
Somewhere.
Most likely it's going to come out of the front by the, by the, the, uh, Greenfield Road property. And another suggestion I would make, if I may, instead of twenty-foot, um, parking spaces, go with eighteen-foot, bring your curb back in two feet.
Do you have the seven, don't we have a seven-foot walk in front right now?
Well, in front of the building, I'm talking about the Greenfield side, you do have eighteen and sevens, and that you did pick up, thank you. That's a suggestion last time, but you could also do that out on Greenfield.
Same thing, okay.
We can pick up another two feet minus, maybe minus four inches, but we pick up a couple of feet of, 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 of permeable surface over the pavement. So, uh, consider the western line as eighteen feet with the two-foot overhang. Okay, yeah, the parking was changed, that's fine. Your, um. I see you revised the concrete to all, I'm sorry, the pavement to all concrete, looked like it was asphalt last time, which is good.
Yeah.
We'll take that. Bear with me as I go through all of these pages. Screen wall and dumpster, they, the, the details just so, just indicate eight-inch CMU. You mentioned split face before.
Split face, the same, same thing that we have the example of, I believe there's a picture of what our split face is, that's going to be the same material.
Okay, yeah, have a color in it, you know, integral color, and, and, in, in the case of the, and it is a six-foot-high wall, there's a triangular piece on the top.
Thank you.
It's five-eight plus four. Uh, in the case of the screen wall, the pretty side goes to the neighbors.
Yeah, it goes, yeah, we're not going to have the, the enclosure have the nice side.
Well, and also on the dumpster, have the, the good-looking side on the outside, not on the inside, the dumpster doesn't care. So, uh, that's good. Okay, and, yeah, okay, you have thicker slab for the truck, the dumpster truck, that's good. Sorry, lots of pages.
We don't have to reprint them again.
Um, it looks like you may or may not have up the window, the glazing area, uh, on this building, and I think last time we talked, we said they were close enough on this building, because our concern was the last one. So, uh, I don't think, I don't have any issues.
No, I, well, if you, just below the west elevation, it, it goes through the window coverage.
Mm-hmm.
And the twenty-five for the A and, well, A and F tenants, that'd be your, the N tenants, and then it, you know, bumps up to twenty-seven for the ones in the middle.
So A and F would be one and six?
Yep.
Okay. B and E would be two and five, and so on and so forth. B and E would be two and five and so on and so forth, okay.
So we're just a few percent short.
Mm-hmm. I, and I don't think we had an issue on this building. Our issue was on the second project. That was even, even smaller. And I have one more comment and thank you for adding, you know, again, it's, it's a small, uh, uh, adding the stripes in the back helps, helps a lot. Um, and you're the architect, I'm an architect. Do you really wanna take this hardy plank? And you, I, I think I asked you this last time in October, and also the, 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 the stone material. Neither of those products should go down to grade. And I don't know what your detail is at the bottom. I think we talked about this last time.
No, I doubt always hold it up at least so you're, you're gonna have masonry, you're gonna have concrete exposed.
Wall or block of some sort, okay.
Of course. Otherwise, no, that's, that's a bad detail.
Yeah, yeah. And Colorado does not, the manufacturer does not want their stone down to grade. It'll wick up the soil and stuff. So, yep. Okay, so you're gonna go with the rounded stone as opposed to the stacked, uh, stone on the elevation? That's your intent on this building? Your rendered elevation shows something a little more stacked.
Yeah, we have a more of a stacked stone versus a, the rounded stone.
And you.
That was our comment.
Yeah.
Which one is it?
Yeah, which one?
I would like, I like the stacked stone. It has a little.
I like the stacked stone, bear in the rounded stone myself. That's my, that's just an opinion. That's not.
You're gonna find more.
If you folks like the river rock, go with the river rock. That's fine.
I like the, the stacked. It looks, they also have a weep system with that that works all.
Well, good, then I'll cross off the round. That's just, uh, just my opinion. And what else do we have here? And photometrics are fine. Landscaping, um. Oh, no, it's the old drawings. Yeah, landscaping, you added a couple of things at the, uh, a couple of plants along the north. The rest of it is all sod. We talked about the stone in the back, between the building and the wall. We talked about that. But the rest of it is all just sod, right?
Sod, and then we have the, the edged, um, I don't wanna say flower banks, but the edged around. Where we have, do have landscaping. It's metal edging around it, so it's not gonna have the grass growing into the landscape.
Okay, and that one, that one spot on the northwest corner.
Yeah, and then there's some fountain grass and so forth and.
Right, okay. Okay, so you had a little, but everything else is sod. Even out in the front, it isn't labeled, but it's all sod, okay.
If you pull that parking back some, can we put something there landscapy pretty?
Well, the problem is that, that two feet that you're gaining, that's actually allowable for the car to overhang into that two feet. So it's, you, you could get grass, you could get sod, that's about it. Otherwise, to have something grow, I don't think, how, what do we have? Do we have five feet or?
Uh, yeah, about three, three and a half feet there.
You're not much.
That's to the property line to the, or I guess the property line is the sidewalk, right? So yeah, you aren't gonna have a lot of.
Yeah, it's just.
So, okay, anybody else have any comments?
Well, can you consider some natural cover where you got that sod?
Now, what are you referring to as a natural cover?
Uh, a, uh, plant, plant material instead of grass or flowers.
Well, the thing with it, anything you put next to a parking lot, it's subjected to salt. And to have a plant that's gonna be survivable with a minimal amount of land area to begin with, that's, um.
Well, i- it is done though. It is done. I mean, I, I'm not saying we're gonna insist on it.
Oh, no, I, well, I, I look at it, there's, there's two things. You're, you're parking over the, the curb. It's also in the winter months, where does the snow go? It goes onto the whatever leftovers we have. That's.
A hardy plant can survive that too. But the roots are a little better at, at retention than.
I would have to do some, looking into what plant materials would, are good with salt and snow.
Oh, I'll, I'll ask you to consider it, but I don't think this, I don't think we're inclined here to hold this up on that issue. But you know, realistically, but, uh, whatever you can do to reduce.
Take something in consideration.
Kentucky bluegrass and, and put natural cover in is, is more, we're more happy about that.
Okay.
One of my fellow commissioners here mentioned a transformer. Do you have it? Um, where is the transformer?
It's up, yeah.
So you don't need a separate transformer? Okay, is there a generator for this building?
No.
Okay. They're not gonna have magnetic im- imaging machines or anything that require a lot of power, okay. Um. Okay, anybody, anybody else have any questions? Is there anybody in the audience that wanted to speak? I meant to ask that earlier and I didn't. Okay, thank you. Does anybody wanna make a motion? I can't do it.
Mr. Chair, I, I move, uh, that we, um, approve, uh, the site plan, uh, for. Uh, agenda item number PSP oh-two, uh, dash two-one. Um, I'm not aware of any conditions that we put on that, uh, so.
Um.
Approved as, as submitted unless there are some conditions.
Is there a second?
Letters.
Is, is there a second for?
Second.
Okay, now, any discussion on it?
Um, I believe there were some letters that we needed to reference.
Yep.
One is the, uh, road commission permits.
Well, DPW, Fire Department and HRC all wrote letters with, but a few comments on.
And the, uh, parcel combo. Can you read my own writing?
And I heard.
Finalized.
Okay, I'd, I'd forgotten about those, so I'll accept that as a friendly.
You mentioned rightfully so, the openings in the bottom of the screen wall.
Yeah, I think there should be some consideration for drainage.
Yeah.
We can put those in.
Um, Mr. Vice Chair, can I ask that also, um, there be a finding? Oh, that the Plating Commission is approving the transparency as proposed, since it is slightly less than thirty percent required by the zoning ordinance?
Um, thank you. Yes, we did. We discussed it and we were happy with it back in October. And you, you're right, we, we must make a, must make a, um, condition on that or, uh, a statement that we did accept it on this building, being a little bit under. Anybody have any issues with that? So the maker of the motion, the seconder agree with all that?
Yes, I accept those as, uh, uh, friendly amendments.
Okay. Here.
All right. Um, Bartis.
Yes.
Dolan.
Yes.
Kempner.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Good luck. Don't go too far. And I know the applicant is here, so I'd like to present this.
All right. Um, so this is PSP oh-three-two-one for three-four-six-two dash three-four-seven-eight Greenfield Ro- Road. A new construction of an office building. Um, and it's requiring site plan, requesting site plan approval for the development of a new six-unit office building in the Greenfield District. Um, you know, this is, um, we're currently two houses just north of the, um, intersection of Twelve Mile and Greenfield. Greenfield is, um, the, in terms of transparency, again, um, it's, appears to be meeting the ordinance, but it might be slightly less. So we'll need confirmation or waiver by Planning Commission if you agree with what is presented before you tonight. Um, that the applicant considers additional landscaping. There's, um, only some that's proposed in the southeast corner. Um, in terms of indicating the location of the stone veneer, it's what the type is and the discrepancy between the, um, what's.
We'll answer that.
Okay, great. Um, and then that the applicant show exterior appliances, if that is the same as the other building. I think what would be helpful for the Community Development Department is if a note was placed either on the site plan or on the elevations. That the appliances are, will be flush with the building, um, just so it's clear and nobody's wondering whether there are some to come or whatnot. Um, in terms of the entering review, engineering review from Hobel, Roth and Clark, um, again, road commission is needed. Soil erosion permits. Um, they've also asked, um, on this and the other one for a geotechnical survey to make sure all the site drainage works. Um, there's a maintenance agreement and, um, the city attorney, the thing that I will note that's different on this than, uh, from an engineering point of view, um, flagged by both HRC and the Department of Public Works, is that the sanitary lead, um, needs a new connection. Um, and so, um, then they, they've also asked, um, that DPW has also asked the applicant. Um, have a licensed plumber video the existing laterals to make sure that the connections are correct on the plan. And that, uh, parcel combination would need to be finalized with the Community Development Department. Um, that's for, that's for this one. That's different than the other one. Um, other, so, um. And then again, um, as I noted in the previous proposal, the fire inspector had questioned why there were no doors in the rear of this property. Um, again, there's nothing in the building code or in the fire code that would require it. Um, but it was a comment he mentioned. Um, so there are, um, a list of conditions similar to the one in the, in the other site plan. Um, recommendation, um, in terms of, um, conditions and also if you could please make findings on, um, the transparency. If they, what's proposed is acceptable to unite, tonight and it, it, we don't have confirmation that it meets the transparency requirements of the Greenfield District.
That's it, good. Anything you'd like to add?
Oh, yes. Uh, as far as the, um, question in the stone, the, stone, stacked stone veneer. Um, you'll notice that our elevations call out that it's a face brick.
Mm-hmm.
And it's a two-tone with an accent band. And I'd also project that out, that accent band like a half inch from the others, just to give it a little more depth. Um, I would like to do the, the face brick in lieu of what was the stacked stone veneer. Happens when you have rendering set the day before, when everything has to go out and then something's not right.
Okay, so this one will be face brick?
Yes, that's correct.
A full, okay, full face brick, not a, not a thin.
No.
And that can go to grade.
As far as other, the other items that we had, uh, worked with the prior planner was to, we did add some more landscape. We added some more character to the back of the building, um, as noted, it's not noted here. But the units that are crossed out in the back, those are, again, flush units with the building. There's no big mechanical units that stick out.
Those are magic pack type units or, um, okay, or Johnson Aries, whatever they call them.
And again, we have the same condition where we have the six-foot-high screen wall. You can see the line that goes across the backside of the elevation. So you have about nine feet to the top edge of the, uh, east side of the building. Otherwise, that's, oh, in our, again, with our, um, transparency, the window coverage for A and F. I mean, that's, that's probably the worst again for the larger suites. That's only tw- twenty-four percent. But then when it goes to the B and E or twenty-nine percent and C and D in the middle, you're at twenty-eight percent. Otherwise, that's. Pretty much it, unless you have other questions or comments or.
Anyone in the, uh, audience wanna speak? Please come to the microphone. State your name and residence and.
William Seaman, thirty-four sixty-one Elwood. Now, the screening wall, is that gonna match the other wall that's there already?
Uh, I didn't drive by this site, uh, since October, so I don't remember what's, you're talking about the other project?
No. We have a wall next to us now.
What is that wall built out of right now?
It's out of brick. So is it gonna match?
Around the entire length of the property or partial? If, if the applicant would like to come up and.
Entire length?
I'm sorry, I didn't look at this since October. I forgot.
The one that goes from Elwood to Greenfield. So is that gonna match that one?
Um, I think a call for a split face, it would not be the same material, no. That's a shorter, he's talking that goes right from Greenfield back, east and west.
Oh, separating from the apartment building?
No. No. Mug and jug.
Okay, okay. Oh, okay.
It'd be nice if it matched, but the other thing is drainage, yeah. I wish twenty-five years ago or whenever that wall went up, they'd had drainage in it then. It would be a big help, 'cause we get a lot of water against that wall. And back then too, there was like a five percent discount for having a wall next to you. Is that gonna apply to this wall too?
No, I don't think there's anything in the zoning ordinance that.
When you say a five percent discount.
Five percent discount.
On taxes.
Oh, it's not our department, sorry.
All right, guys.
Just don't pay any taxes. It's okay. Okay, anybody else? Okay, uh, obviously, this is very similar to the previous project. We had a couple additional comments. I think the biggest comment, October, was the, uh, the fenestration on the, on the front. Um, so if anybody else has any comments, please.
Well, if we're gonna talk about landscaping, it seems like that area by the monument sign is more than enough room to add something low to not block off the monument sign, but you can add something there.
That probably can be done at both sites as well.
Quite honestly, I'd rather see landscaping along the north wall than, than by the sign, but that's just me, so, um. That strip, that is.
Yeah, there too.
I mean, Greenfield isn't the prettiest street in Berkeley, uh, but, um, we're not looking for a, a forest or a na- natural, nature preserve, but it'd be nice to get the, um, little something, maybe in the northeast corner. Couple of trees along there up in that front.
And we can.
Okay.
I would agree with that. Some trees or some.
Yeah, some kind of arrangement, uh, similar plants that you have in the south, I'm sorry, northwest corner, my, my, my mistake. You have in southeast corner, you have a couple things. If you could throw a couple in the sod area in the northeast corner, that would go.
As long as that's not gonna block the view, 'cause that is the, uh, in and out of the apartment building right there.
It has to be held back.
So we'd have to hold it back and.
Yep, yep.
Under story, so.
Mm-hmm. Would be a little bit of a buffer. There's nothing there now, but, um, it would help a lot, so, okay.
I, I just had one question. Um, maybe I should have asked it on last one too. Where do you anticipate you'll push the snow? When we get it, without taking out a parking spot or obstruction, uh, to your dumpster or the view?
Well, you can take it to the north.
So that parking spot, they'll just back into it?
I don't have how, there'd be this, there, there's a little strip that's on the north side between the.
So.
The fence and there's a landscape space there.
All right.
Where we're putting landscaping.
Exactly, so. Just, I know sometimes, um, the plows will push it towards, uh, where it obstructs the view. And I have a heck of a time getting out of my street because both, uh, businesses at my corner do it. So I'm just curious, if you were planning on pushing it up north, it's, there's a spot there or into the apartments, but.
Hauled off.
Hauled off.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else?
I got a question regarding the sign. Is that a separate review?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, we, we probably have the same issue at the back wall with grades, and I didn't look at the grading on this one.
I did a little bit. It was actually, um, there was a couple of low grades back there. It looked like it was.
But it didn't look like sheeting to the west.
For the most part, it looked like it was flowing east.
No reason to fix us something that isn't a problem, so, okay. Anybody else? Anybody else?
The gentleman that spoke, sir, is there any flooding issues in your neighborhood?
In my yard there is.
He said it, along that screen wall, on the, the screen wall on the north side? Or is it the south side?
South.
South side?
Just only your yard or is there, can you comment on?
Yeah, there's a few yards, but two yards next to me, they get a lot of water in them too. And with the wall, it's, you got a wall, that's a brick wall down there behind the apartments, you got a brick wall on the other side. Sure it'd be nice if that would all match.
I guess, is there, is there anything we should be thinking about to?
Regarding?
Regarding the flooding that he's referring to?
No, my, my yard has a little bit of water in it right now too. I'm sure everybody else's or most people here does, so, you know, it's a seasonal thing. But that's off on the existing wall, looking at the grades, we're not sheeting west like we were on the other property.
Okay, well, I wanted to bring that out.
That's, that's good.
It's hard to tell for sure though, because there's not a lot of.
There's not a lot of grades on here.
Offsite, but it doesn't look like it is.
Doesn't look like it has the issues.
And to his point, I can feel it, if I'm sitting in my backyard, I don't necessarily want all these walls to be different. Yeah. And something to think about in the future because that, it's not something they can control, right? But that is kind of something I don't know that anybody really wants in their backyard or multiple different styles of walls.
Well, I have three fences in my backyard and all three of them are different. None of them are ours, so they're all there, so it's just something to get used to, I guess. The split, the integral color split, split face block is not a bad look. It's not a, have you chosen a color for it yet?
No, not as, as of yet. It'd be, it'd be similar to the brick that we're using, it'd match.
Is that brick wall, what, what, is that an orange-red brick wall?
Walls that go on east and west by the apartments and as a gentleman has mentioned, the restaurant, they go with the same color, they have paint colored brick. Those two would match, none of them would be different.
That's what, that'd be a good suggestion with the, maybe. If, you're not gonna get a perfect match because it's, it's concrete and not clay, but that would be a good. That'd be a good suggestion. Anybody else?
And I think we're okay with the amount of transparency.
Um, I was gonna talk about that, hold on.
I guess before we go on past the screen wall, there's an existing fence back there. Would the existing fence be removed? Because there'd be an existing fence and then a gap and then the screen wall.
Depends on whose property it's on. Yeah, that's, there's, I know there's a fence, but that's not on our property that we're looking at. Then there's a utility pole that we actually had to move our fence forward because of the utility pole, so.
I think this was discussed in October.
I believe so.
That those, those properties will kind of like gain space, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, and if those fences are removed and was it two or three feet from? So they effectively gain three feet in their backyard to your wall because. You don't really need it at that point, so. But that's up to the landowners, the, the property owners behind you, if they want to keep the fence. You'd probably want to get rid of it because it's just gonna get overgrown anyway, so weeds and things, so. But they do gain a few feet in their yards effectively for their use. Anybody else, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. This is maybe internal too, and when they inspect, I don't know Megan if you know this, there's only certain sidewalk pieces being replaced. Is there any, if damage is done to any existing sidewalk not called out for replacement, would that stretch just be replaced too?
That's part of the building inspection.
That's part, okay. Okay.
And I think that it's really DPW who, who oversees that, but they would have an inspection as well.
Right. Okay.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Between the building and the wall. There's no lighting back there whatsoever. Maybe no one will ever go back there after this building is built. It might not be a bad idea to have a couple of small security lights, don't, we don't, you know, we're all about photometrics and not spilling light.
It'd be very similar to what we have on the other property. It just, you wouldn't have one at every door, but just have like maybe three.
Right.
But it'd be directed downward and very subtle.
Just a suggestion because, you know, we were all teenagers at one time, so. Okay, just a suggestion. Probably in your best interest actually for the tenants. Okay, uh, I gotta go through the pages again, sorry. Same comments about the screen wall in the back and the dumpster wall. Split side facing the residents and then the outside of the dumpster.
Well, along the, the shared wall between the residence and the office building, I'd have both sides split face.
Okay, that's fine too.
That way, yeah, I mean, look good on both sides.
Absolutely. No need to do it on the inside of the dumpster, okay. That's fine. Okay. As far as the, I guess we call it the transparency along the front. This is less than the other building. Back in October is much less, or not much, that's the wrong term, considerably less. That's probably not the right term either. Anyway, it looks like you dropped the sill of the windows. About how much?
That was about, I wanna say six to eight inches.
Okay. You're a lot closer. Now, the reason we, we did transparency a hundred years ago when I first started on the planning commission. Was really for a downtown, people strolling along and looking in the windows and the storefronts and things, make it look like something's happening. Not a lot of people stroll along Greenfield Road. And you're also set back considerably from Greenfield Road. So I think you made the attempt, in my opinion, you've added some wind, you've added some height to the window. And it's not quite what our ordinance says, but I think in the spirit of Greenfield Road being an office building, being seventy, eighty feet back, whatever it is from Greenfield Road. I, I personally don't, I personally think they're close enough.
And I agree, and I think, I think he, I think you were the one that brought up the possibility of dropping the sills at the October meeting. So. The applicant took your suggestion to heart and I think, I think we suggested at that time, we'd probably be okay with the, the result. And I, I think I am in agreement that what they have proposed is sufficient for the, for the neighborhood.
Yeah, considering the environment that they're in.
Considering the environment, yeah. I, I, I just, I'm gonna put on my soapbox for like ten seconds and then get off it. I, I, as a general, I do not like parking lots in front of buildings. I like parking lots behind buildings. Greenfield is not an intimate downtown street. And the more important thing is that I don't believe there's any, in that district, there's any legal ability for us to withhold approval. You know, because of this design, I, I just don't think we have that ability. So it, it's moot issue, but I just wanted to, I just want to say that I, I don't think it's particularly attractive design that we should, I think we should be vigilant about promoting. You know, more pedestrian friendly venues throughout our community. And as we go through the ordinance revision process, I hope we keep that in mind.
And I think on most thoroughfares in town or the business streets. We are pretty, Woodward is another exception, there's a parking in front, but that's the nature of the beast on Woodward and Greenfield. But I think most, most of the other areas, there are some where we do a park in the front, but I think that's a good suggestion. And that in our more of a downtown, the slower moving traffic where people do walk. We do want to push the buildings towards the street, but you're right. Anybody else?
Do you want to ask questions now?
Please.
Hi, this is Jared from Elwood. I'm one of the new builds right there and I came in here, I talked to you guys, I think, last time. I tried dialing in, but it was just the live stream, so I rushed down here real quick. I love your idea about parking the backs, I think last time we said, parking the back would allow for some landscaping. And I spent like three thousand dollars planting a bunch of arborvitae to hide all of the Wendy's signs and everything like that. If the building backs right up, it's gonna kill all my arborvitae's as well. Because I think last time your point, or is it, I think your point was, trees won't be able to grow if they plant them in front of the wall and the other side of the wall. If the, if the parking's in the front, but then I was like, okay, well, if that's the case, then you're gonna kill all of my stuff that's existing there now. So did, you guys already decide, is the parking gonna be in the front and the back? Is that already a decision?
No, we, we just talked about, in an ideal world, we'd like to see the building towards the front and the parking towards the back. Greenfield's a different animal.
Yeah.
And it's not, it's not a, it's a, you know, fairly high speed road, it's a wide road. It's a collector road or it's a main thoroughfare, so it's really not a downtown type road. And we have nothing that, in the ordinance, that requires us to re, ask applicant to put their parking in the back.
Yeah, I just don't think we have the legal ability to make that demand.
So you guys can't make that demand, but you can make requests for landscaping?
Well, they've added some more landscaping in the front. Their, their comments before, they have about nine feet between a fifteen foot building and a six foot. Wall, which is the screened wall. And not a lot is gonna grow in there and.
And that's if the parking's in the front.
That's as the building is right now.
But as of right now, the parking's in the front, okay.
Right.
So, but to your point though, that, then everything behind it, if they can't grow it right there, I mean, we're literally talking a couple of feet, so if nothing will grow there.
Well, within that, within that narrow avenue.
Right.
Yours is open up to your yard. Now, your garage may be tight to this fence, you know, I don't know, five, ten feet away, you may have issues there. But in your yard, remember, this is, this street goes north, the wall goes north, so you get all the morning sun. The only time you'd be in shadow is in the late evening. So any plantings will be, in a, in an open yard, will get a lot of sunlight.
I'm sorry, technically along their rear is that twelve foot wide utility easement too.
Right.
So you would, anything you planted on there, if it got too tall, the DTE would come through and, and trim it for you.
Why would they come trim it because what would?
Well, it's, it's within the utility easement, so if you planted anything that got too tall, they come through.
They'll cut it away from the wires.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it was, it was interesting because when we bought, this is my complaint last time, when we bought the house. I think we spent almost ten, close to ten thousand dollars a year in taxes. It was all greenery and then I guess the landlord or whatever of the property, something happened and they decided to cut everything down, which that's their decisions on their property. But it's, I mean, that was like, they never came and cut anything down before. I mean, you know, we're not looking for forty feet trees, we know that's not realistic, but just something, so when we look out our back door, we're now not looking at. A gigantic building that's literally directly out of our back door and then just like everything else. I mean, shame on us because we should have done more research before moving here, but it'd be nice that is taxpaying people, that some of that's taken into consideration. And I think also, in my opinion, just if, if it's a high traffic area, wouldn't you want parking in the back so people aren't getting in and out of cars closer to the road? Wouldn't it be safer to have pedestrians in the back of the building away from a high speed road?
Well, there's quite a separation from the actual lanes of the road and the, the, the parking area. I mean, you know, there's houses all up and down Greenfield have driveways and they back out into Greenfield and that's a pretty dangerous situation.
Right, I agree.
So, but the bottom line is, we have nothing in our ordinance in this Greenfield District that says the building has to be up towards the road.
Got it.
And, and there's, there's advantages to having in the back because rocks do spit up and people, you know, do get broken windows occasionally in their buildings and things like that, but. So that's ways, what you'll be looking at is a six foot wall. That's a very variegated surface. And then beyond that, nine, ten feet beyond that, there'll be the, the fifteen foot tall building, you'll see the back of that. And if you have plants growing in there, you'll be, you'll be, they will be shielding most of that view. I don't know what your landscaping looks like. Now, also what this building does is being where it is, it shields a lot of the noise that's coming off of Greenfield. I don't know where your relationship is with the building, but it does help. We've had situations in the past, along Woodward Avenue, there were some empty lots and the people were very upset when a credit union came in. And also when the market, Westborne came in, they're very upset because they have a wall in their backyard instead of this open field, which of course looked out to Woodward. Was a different situation, but now they're all very happy because it's cut down the noise and everything else. And this, nothing's perfect.
Right, right.
But it's a trade-off, so.
And I think that, I agree, that's a, that's a pro for sure. And sorry, my last, my last question is, between my fence and this wall, I think we talked about last time, of like, how's the maintenance work? Because I have like, it's like a wooden, parallel, kind of like, almost like, almost like a ship lap type wall outdoors or whatever. So if a bunch of weeds and stuff grow, if I can't get behind there to maintain it, weeds are gonna grow through the fence and stuff like that.
Well, technically their property.
Okay, so do they, do they have to maintain that?
Yeah, they have to maintain that, that run a lawnmower through there and maintain that property. However, the offer is, you know, I don't, you know, like you said, you had a wooden fence, it sounds like it's fairly new. If you had old beat up chain link fence, take it down, you just gain three feet in your backyard effectively.
Which I would totally do if I, if I had that.
If you didn't just put in this fancy expensive fence. But that's, it's on their property, so that's part of their maintenance agreement is to maintain, maintain that.
Okay, so then it'll be a little strip of grass or whatever, they'll maintain the wall and then how many feet until the building from the wall?
Another twelve feet or so until the building.
And that will just be a lot?
Well, the wall though, there'll be about nine feet to the building from the wall.
Okay, and that'll just be like pavement?
Gravel.
What's that?
Stone.
Stone?
Gravel.
Okay, it'll be stone, okay. Alright, thank you guys for answering my questions, appreciate it.
Thank you for your concern.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, as long as, and, and just another thing too, you know, we've had a lot of issues, I think I heard it on the, earlier on in the call or in the meeting. About like flooding and there's lots of garbage and stuff that collects, so I just hope, who, who do I like contact if I start getting construction trash and stuff on the? Okay.
Building department.
Okay, alright, perfect.
We'll call Megan, she'll give you her home's phone number.
I've been talking to Megan, yeah, there you go, awesome, thank you.
I drove down, I drove down your street today and I, I don't know which house is yours, where you said it was a new build, so I know, I know what those are. It is pretty tight in there, you know, it's, like the chair was saying, it's, nothing is ideal, but.
No, everything's a compromise unfortunately.
I think you can, I think you can work with the scenario back there and, you know.
Yeah.
Take, take the rough edges off of it, I think.
Yep. Alright, thank you guys.
Thank you. Okay, anything else anybody here want to discuss before we have a motion? Or do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve item number PSP. O three twenty-one. Subject to conditions. Contained in the letters that have been referenced by our temporary planning director. And the requirement to add vegetation along the north west portion of the, of the parcel. I believe that covers the, the situation?
There are... Do we need to, in this motion, talk about the transparency, too?
Yeah, we'll make a, we'll make a mention of the transparency, so, okay. Any comments on the motion?
Well, there were the, yeah, all the letters you mentioned, right?
Yeah, that'd be the DPW, Fire Department, HRC, and Oakland, Oakland County's going to have some things to say, too, so.
It's already of record, so.
And the landscaping in the northwest, and also the screen wall, uh, pick a split-face color to match close to the existing brick walls, is something I heard earlier.
I'll, I'll amend my motion accordingly.
And we have to mention that the transparency, uh, Megan, is...
Transparency is fine as proposed?
I think we determined, considering the situation, the environment it's in, it's close enough.
Okay.
Or acceptable.
I think we're just noting for the record that we've, uh...
That you'd made that waiver.
That we've accepted it, yeah.
Strict adherence, uh, to the, uh, requirement based on showing of reasonable compliance by the applicant.
And one suggestion, this is a suggestion, some, a little bit of security lighting in the back, but that's just a suggestion, not a requirement.
That's not a condition of approval?
I don't think that's a condition, that's something...
I would almost want to make it, because otherwise, I will, it, it's not particularly safe, right?
No, that's fine, I, I meant a suggestion, but if someone wants to make it a...
The chair can't do it.
No, I can't do it.
Well, is anybody opposed to making it a condition?
No.
Are you okay with us making it a condition?
I was going to say, the Conny Island next door has highlights, and they're, they're, um, extremely bright, and they're shined.
Probably not well-shielded either.
Yeah, and the same with the apartment building, there's also higher lights there. If we put one or two, yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, I'll, I'll accept that as an amendment as well. Are there any others?
I think, I think that's it, I mean, these two are pretty similar, and... Did we leave anything out, Megan?
No, do you want me to repeat back what I have in my notes?
Yes.
If you want to, yeah.
Um, subject to the conditions contained in the letters, um, per the staff review dated January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, add vegetation to the northwest portion of the parcel. Um, finding that transparency is fine as proposed, considering the context of Greenfield, um, Greenfield Road, the split-face, um, brick screening walls to match the walls on adjacent properties to the best extent possible, and there is to be one to two, um, security lights posted in the rear.
Well-shielded.
I would only add, for the landscaping at the northwest corner, I would say that it needed to stay out of the sight lines for the, because that's a driveway next door, isn't it? Yeah, it would just need to stay out of the, the sight vision lines for the intersection, pull out. Okay. All right, um, should I call the roll?
Absolutely.
Um, Bartis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Good luck.
Mr. Vice Chair, the next item on the agenda is the DDA de- design guidelines, it's an old-business item. We're going to have a work session on next Tuesday at seven PM on this. Um, survey results that, um, were, as of last week, were included in your packet. Um, there, since that time, there has been at least one planning commissioner who has participated, and I know the link was then sent out also finally to the DDA, um, commissioners, so, um, we'll have updated survey results in your packet. Just wanted to, um, note that we'll go into this in depth next week, and I could answer any quick questions people have.
I just have a quick point, um, and you were at the DDA meeting, so you probably, I don't know if you remember or not, but, um, I think Mateo wanted to be part of that work session, too, so we have to make sure that we get an invite to him.
I will make sure that he is notified and invited. Thank you.
And will you update the survey results on the Google Drive?
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll be notified?
Yeah, so we, I anticipate putting out a new packet on Thursday for the March first meeting, and that will include updated survey results.
Okay.
If I ever get my link back.
Can I just ask, like, I know that it's all here in, um, percentages, is there any way just to make it like, you know, six out of seven, or however many?
Yeah, I think there's a way to do that.
Let's save some paper.
I just, I won't, then I don't have to calculate it all, like...
Yeah, I think that's a quick...
It's only seven people who are...
I think that's a quick click in the, um...
Thank you.
In the program.
If not, it's okay.
So next on the agenda is, um, PSP oh-two-twenty-two, twenty-two-twenty-two, West Eleven Mile Road. Um, this is a sketch plan for the proposed building renovation for a marijuana provisioning center. You had a lot of documentation in your packet about this, because this was originally submitted as for site plan. The applicant, as you can see by the letter that was also in your packet, um, asked for a sketch plan, um, last Thursday. On Wednesday, they had a meeting, um, with myself, um, HRC, DPW, uh, and DPW to go over the review letters, because you'll have seen there were a lot of outstanding items in those review letters. We went through a sketch plan the last time, um, for thirty-seven, thirty-seven, twelve mile, but just for folks in the audience, I want to let them know what this is. Um, so it's an item may be submitted to the planning commission for an informal discussion. No approval shall be granted. Um, however, the applicant can present and discuss a proposed project, um, and any anticipated problems before applying for site plan approval. Another thing I want to note, um, is because we've, you also have correspondence before you, um, that was received today. Um, one from the city of Huntington Woods itself, and two, um, residents, one of Huntington Woods and the other one, I can't remember whether they're Huntington Woods or not. Um, one person also attached two, um, academic articles, um, about the impacts of marijuana provisioning centers. Um, that, this is not a discussion of the use, it's a discussion of the site plan. The use is a principal permitted use, and City Council, by issuing the licenses, um, and they will, and I, um, City Manager Baumgarten can talk more about that process. Um, they are the ones essentially deciding on the use. You, Planning Commission, are serving the administrative function of site plan, and seeing whether review, it complies with site plan. However, per your ordinance, it needed to be noticed, um, for everybody within three hundred feet, and since it's on the border, there were, um, notices were sent to folks in Huntington Woods. At that meeting that I mentioned, um, that was held on Wednesday, the group identified an issue in the rear yard screen wall, um, that will need your input tonight, um, and it actually dovetails nicely with some things that, um, Commissioner Dolan was bringing up on the previous site plans that were before you tonight. Um, there's a sewer pipe in the northwest corner of the site, um, and an easement's going to be required for that, because that's a city sewer. However, that easement typically doesn't allow a structure to be built within the easement. Um, and so the ordinance does allow you, Planning Commission, to waive it, so it doesn't need to be across the entire, um, the entire property line.
When you're saying structure, you mean the wall?
The wall, so the, it's, there's a requirement for a screen wall.
Right.
Along that rear property line. So, um, and also, um, the head of DPW has brought up multiple times in meetings that the screen walls, as you all have pointed out, um, do prevent sheet flow, um, across properties. Um, and he's seen that, um, walls have become compromised, um, long-term, because of the soils underneath them become weak, and then also there's pooling on either side. Um, so he's often asked if there's a way to have preparations or flow holes, um, in that design in order to accommodate that, um, not only to prevent flooding, but also to keep the integrity of that structure. Um, so I know from my point of view, um, in community development and coordinating these development reviews, it would be helpful to have, um, so direct, some direction on that rear screen wall, its design, um, in terms of, um, sheet flow, but also in terms of over that easement. Finally, a planning commissioner inquired about whether Hunting Woods Christian School was considered, um, for the review of the license and the site plan. That was also questioned in the letter from Huntington Woods. Um, in consultation with the city attorney last week, it was determined that since Hunting Woods Christian School is a preschool, it's not subject to the section one-three-eight-five-two-eight C, which says the site, quote-unquote, must not be within a thousand feet of a pre-existing public or private school providing education in kindergarten, or any of the grades one through twelve.
Do you know why preschools were excluded from that?
It is directly from, from what I understand, and then, um, uh, Matt, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, that language came directly from the state law, um, in terms of where marijuana provisioning centers may be located.
That's absolutely correct. We, uh, we thought it best, uh, mirror the state statute on that.
I'd be happy to answer any questions, but, um, really, it's, it's your show.
Okay, as, as Megan said, um, we are here only, solely, for the building and the site plan. Regarding, well, let me back up. This is new to Berkeley. This is new to us. It's new to you folks. This is the first what, uh, of what was to be three licenses spread around Berkeley for these facilities. And at the, uh, February seventh meeting, City Council decided to up that to five. So regardless of what any of us think up here, pro or con, um, the City Council deemed that, uh, these provisioning centers, um, are one of the many legitimate businesses in Berkeley, just like any other licensed business. And it's a good, they, they deemed this is a good business to have in Berkeley. We have nothing to say about that. Like I said, any comments regarding these businesses, the appropriateness or non of these businesses should be directed to City Council. We're here solely for the site plan approval. And you're free to express your comments. We'll ask you, you know, under the rules of three minutes. But again, we cannot respond, um, to, uh, anything regarding these, these, these facilities. Uh, I personally asked that a couple City Council representatives be here to answer those questions, and apparently they're not going to be here. Matt, I believe, will answer, will suffice that. I, I wish one or two of them would have been here to stand by their decision, but that's, that's up to them. So again, we're here only for the site plan, and I'm going to go through this again, not the appropriateness of the business. That is not our preview, much like in the last, someone's mentioned something about taxes, that's not us. We have a very narrow thing here. We're here strictly to look at the building and, and the site. And, uh, so, um, sorry, we can't be of more help, but hopefully Matt can answer your questions. But if you do have a lot of questions or concerns, get ahold of City Council, and that's their, that's their business, not ours. Does that make myself clear? Okay, thank you. So, um, is the applicant here? Okay, please step up. Describe your, uh, your project to us.
Sure, uh, I'm Grant Jeffries with Five Eights Architecture, I'm the architect for the project. These are two of the owners of the Operation Grow. Um, I'll let them introduce themselves a little bit, and then, you know, I can introduce the specifics of the building and site, and answer any questions that you guys have.
Hi, everyone, my name is Chris Clampin, I'm one of the co-founders of Operation Grow LLC DBA Butter. I'm also the chief executive officer, so we're two facilities so far. We have a cultivation in Flint, uh, which we just got the ribbon on February first, and, uh, we're here to stand behind our application, our perfect score that we achieved, and come through on the commitments that we made to the city, and, uh, we're here to present our sketch plan.
Hi, I'm Dan Amory, I'm chief operating officer for Butter, and I'm also a Berkeley resident for the past four and a half years. And I just want to say, um, you know, just like Chris said, we, we just want to live up to our commitments to the city and be good neighbors and good, uh, citizens, so, uh, any questions anyone has can direct them at us as well.
The architect to come up and give us a quick synopsis. And I want to thank you for changing this to a sketch plan, or a, like, an informal meeting. It means a lot. Yeah, we, we, this is something we've pushed, uh, for years and years and years, and not enough people take advantage of it, and it'd be, it's, it's helpful to all parties, so, thank you.
So this is an existing building on Eleven Mile, it's about forty-eight hundred square feet. We're actually reducing the size of the building as part of this plan. Uh, one, uh, we're kind of carving out a, an entry courtyard at the front, that would be the main entrance and exit to the building for the patrons, and then along the east facade, we actually are removing a portion of the building to get a, a pedestrian walkway to add to our overall width of the parking. In terms of exterior materials, we're going to paint the existing brick and block, uh, an off-white color. We're adding a significant amount of, uh, aluminum storefront glazing, uh, which I, we have a sample of back here. That'll be, uh, the dark, standard dark bronze color, and then we have kind of a, an accent on the front of a, of a yellow tile, terracotta glazed tile. The current site with the building and the parking lot is about eighty-five percent, uh, impervious surfaces. Uh, we're, we're pretty much going to be, if not one-hundred percent, uh, pervious, pretty close to that. Um, the, the entire parking lot surface is going to be permeable pavement, all the walkways are going to be permeable pavers. Um, and then we also have some turf stones, uh, at the back, kind of in between the building and the north property line. We've got samples of all that here as well. Um, we have a pretty robust, uh, landscape plan that was, um...
Mr. Sample's going to have an issue later.
Uh, we have a robust landscaping plan that was designed towards native species in southeast Michigan. Uh, it was intended to be low-maintenance, uh, you know, environmentally friendly, it doesn't require, uh, a lot of watering, things like that. We're adding, as part of the application process, as I'm sure you're all aware, there was the mayor-based point system. So there are a lot of streetscape elements that we're adding as part of the project, including, uh, bike racks, public benches, uh, lighted bollards, um, things of that nature. The, most of the roof, other than what's going to be dedicated to, uh, mechanical equipment, is going to be a green roof. Uh, so again, that adds to the impervia- or the, sorry, the pervious surfaces of the lot. Um, anything that's not absorbed by the green roof, we're going to, uh, direct into some rain barrels and some stormwater planters. So really, um, we, a lot of the comments, I think, uh, from HRC were kind of about adding specific details to kind of the engineered site plan, which we had intended to do as part of the building permit application. Uh, obviously, now we're aware that we're, we're required to do that as part of site plan review. So we'll be adding those details, um, and coming before you for site plan approval. But we wanted to take this opportunity just to get some initial feedback from you guys, so we could incorporate any comments, uh, when we go for the actual approval. So I'll leave it at that. If you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Megan, I don't know, did anybody receive, I may have missed it, but anybody receive the, because apparently we've got a few of these, the tally, the point system from City Council?
Those weren't...
Right, they were, yeah, they were clear in the packet, I, um, they're, they're posted on the city's websites, and, um, but they're made publicly available, I can certainly send them each of them.
Would anybody like, like a copy of that to review before we?
I would.
I think if, if that could be put into our packet, uh, next month, or next meeting, as, just as a reference, whether they're before us or someone else's before us, it'd be, be nice to have that, just to see where they were supposed to be going with all this, if that's not a problem. problem.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Any residents, we have a few residents here would like to speak, please come up and, your name and your...
Is it up there?
Please, yeah, to the microphone, please, so we can hear you. This is being taped and broadcast, too.
Oh, boy. My name is Denise Losi. I live right behind, with a gray house right behind you guys, our garage and everything. Listen, we've been there for 38 years, and you will remember.
I remember.
We've only had one problem, and that was 50 to 80 dogs.
Right.
So nothing can ever be as bad as that. So I don't have an issue so much with the business or anything. What I have concern with is what's going to happen right behind our house, because just what we were worried about happening did happen. There's a big dead space right behind our house. There's a little brick wall, and then we put up our fence, and while we take care of the one area, that space care, it's your area, well, we have taken care of that. You know, you can, we just want to know what's going to happen. It's not ours, we don't take it, you know what I mean? You take it to what you want, but we want to know what's going to happen there at this point, you know? And again, when we look out, I'm going to talk to you guys. When we look out our back, and you're welcome to come to my house anytime and look out. When I look, okay, we might. But when I look out my, you can see where my door ball is, obviously. When we walk into our kitchen and look out there, you know, it's all brick on that one side. That's going to be all opening glass, it looks like. I looked at some of the pictures and stuff.
Not the back of the building.
Not the back, but we see your side. We see your side.
Could you speak into the microphone so everybody at home, the thousands of people watching can...
Must you say that?
Sorry.
Anyways, well, we see the side of the building, so we're not directly behind it, but we see the side where it looks like all the glass is going to be and everything. And I'm wondering, like I said, what's going to happen right behind our house, just like the resident before said. Some nice trees would be really nice, you know, just to not have, just to make it feel like you have a little bit of privacy once that goes in. And again, what's going to happen directly behind us? That little brick wall that was, that's there, that's been knocked down three times in the past 38 years. So with that being said, and it did get repaired, it takes time and stuff. Now our fence is there. If that brick wall comes down, which is fine by me, if that brick wall comes down, what are they going to do to stop it from hitting our fence at that point if somebody's plowing back there or something? Because once it was a car that went through it, twice it got hit with a snowplow. So those are kind of my questions, you know? And what are the hours going to be and what's going to go on with that kind of stuff, you know? But like I said, I go back to the same thing. I'm not nearly as worried about this as I was as far as 50 to 80 dogs, 55 feet from my back door. But also, and one thing I do want to add, I don't know what that does to my house value either, you know what I mean? So we'd only talked to two people about it, and they said that pretty much the value, it shouldn't hurt your value, but you are going to lose people who will look at your house eventually when you go to sell. And that's the other thing. Eventually, we would, you know, like to retire and be able to sell the house as well, you know, so...
Well, I know you folks, you have another 30 years in that house, so...
We've already been there 38, you know? But, yeah, but those are kind of my concerns, so...
Thank you.
You want us to address all of them?
Sure.
Hang on one second, please. Can you just for a second? I'm going to tell you guys, I'm David Losi, 2189 Princeton. My darling wife just talked to you. The situation with the, you mentioned the sewer line that goes down the center of the alley. Back when the dog place was there, they said, well, we're going to put up this wall right down where they decided to vacate the alley, which in turn gave your side of 11 Mile, half of the alley, and we got half of the alley. Yep, yep. And so they said, well, we're going to put up this masonry wall down the center of the alley. Well, nobody knew it until I brought it up, that the sewer, there's a sewer line going right straight down the middle of the alley. When I put my wooden screen fence in, because that was what the decision was by the dog place, is they moved a masonry wall right on top of what's there now, and they just made it taller, okay? And so I put up my wooden fence, and lo and behold, the city came along and went in the pipe and found that there was a manhole right under where I put my fence, right straight under it. And so now my fence is leaning on that one. I've yet to fix it, but it moved it. So the problem is going to be, for anything that happens, there's going to be a situation where you can't put a masonry wall on top of a sewer. And that, yes, the sewer's down in the ground about, I watched them dig it up, actually, at the dog place, and it was about, I don't know, 10, 15 feet down in the ground, down in. And so that, you know, creates a little bit of an issue there. So I just wanted you to be aware, and everybody else, too, so...
We'll talk, we'll get into that issue.
Yeah.
Anybody else, well, anybody else with the neighbors?
But I guess Denise asks us, what are the operating hours for this business?
Please, please talk into the microphone, yes.
It's going to be 10 to 9, seven days a week.
Seven days a week, right, okay. Teresa Foreman, I live at 2221 Princeton. My home is directly behind this business. The sewer actually runs what would be in the residential property, because the previous owner of this building had to take my fence down, ruined my fence, dug down 10 to 15 feet to take their clean out and move it back onto your property. So that's the issue number one. If people have to get in with machinery, the only way they can do it, if you guys put that wall up, it's going to have to come through our yards and tear up our yards yet again. Again, same as Dave and Denise, I don't care that they're selling marijuana. That's not what bothers me. What is now happening to our community is that you are getting a business that is open 12 hours a day, 11 hours a day, seven days a week. What we have there now is a commercial building that operates from 8 to 6 p.m., all of those places, with the exception of drought, which we already have some traffic issues with people parking and going to drought. What is this going to do? I now will have six LEDs on the west side at nine feet that will now illuminate my backyard. I understand that they're going down, but my quality of life, now I no longer have a private backyard. I will have five LED lights on the north side of the building facing into my yard, and the six on the west that will also come into my yard. So that's my issue, right? Second, third issue now, we're on traffic. Has anybody done a traffic study? If you look at all of the other dispensaries in our area, they are in industrial parks. I know, because I work behind Gage. Every Friday and Saturday, there is a line wrapped around the building. Will you be doing drive-through, or is this park only?
We're not allowed to do drive-through yet.
Okay. So they would like to do drive-through. What is that doing to our neighborhood, and where are they going to go? We already, again, like I said, we have issues on Henley from drought. People park very close to 11 Mile, you can't see around them, once they put that walk-up window. They also have their semi-trucks that park there when they're delivering. Again, we don't think collectively with a few of the neighbors that I've been speaking to, that a six-foot wall is sufficient. I didn't move in to an area, I wouldn't have moved behind a liquor store for the same principles. It's high traffic, seven days a week, open late. When I want to enjoy my yard, Fridays and Saturdays, it's going to be high traffic. So I have now essentially moved into what is a busy retail space. I wouldn't have bought the home behind a liquor store, I just wouldn't have. And again, with the drive-through, what is that going to do to our life? I think that's basically what I'm saying, is that the traffic is going to change our quality of life in the neighborhood, in addition to all of the lights. Nobody's arguing that this is a beautiful building, it's a beautiful plant. I want to know now how my quality of life as a Berkeley resident is going to be. And if I have to sell my house, which I have, for the last six years, invested money in my gardens, home improvements, I'm about to do a kitchen remodel, not really sure if I'm going to do that, because I have to move, because my quality of life is no longer a quiet residential neighborhood. With the exception of Dream Cruise on the Fourth of July, when the Masons have parties, we're quiet. We're quiet around there. Also, what is the intended use of the green space behind backing up to us? Because there's an additional door that has been added.
That's a question I'll, we'll be asking then.
Okay. Because there's, there's one door now, they're adding a second door. I also have a question of why, who is this proposed tenant? Are there plans in the future for you guys to be growing in that space?
No, no, it's not possible.
That's, that's good to know, but why, so now we're going to have two businesses there, correct?
There's a city requirement to have multi-tenant buildings.
We'll get into that question, too.
So if there is not, that they, as of right now, city ordinance will not allow them to grow marijuana there, as of today? Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Hello, my name is Jorge Martinez. I live right across the street from them. It's in 13125 West 11 Mile Road in Huntington Woods. Before all this, this is the first letter I got from regarding this proposal, right? Berkeley's been talking about it since 2019. I've been living in Huntington Woods now, in that specific spot, since 2016. I'm moving to the city because it's adjacent to Berkeley, it's a nice area, right? And now, of course, my quality of life is going to go down, because again, it's going to be open seven days a week, traffic is going to be insane. I'm the one who's backing out of my driveway and going into 11 Mile, right? So now I'm going to have, even now, what, lines of cars trying to get into, to get marijuana from that place? So, I mean, realistically, this is not, this is not really good for me and my young two daughters, as well as the other daughters that are next to us as well. I mean, my daughters are five and two, right? Same thing with my neighbors next door. So it's just, and to tell the truth, I mean, this is kind of like slap in the face to tell me when Berkeley's about to provide this information to, or the building to them, right? I mean, you could have told me several months ago, several years ago, and I could have sold my house. It takes just, it takes three months to sell a house, realistically, plus two more months for me to get my house ready. That's just an average. And this is going to happen now, right? So you could have told us a long time ago and do that. And if I hear correctly, now with drought being there, I mean, this is going to be insanity there. There's not going to be enough spaces. I mean, right now, the building, just how it stands, there's only, what, I think, maybe 12 spaces, 12 parking spaces at the most, right? And with 12 people working in that building, they come in, they park the car, they go to lunch sometimes, and then they leave, right? Again, it's eight to six, that's it. And now it's going to be traffic coming in and out. It's going to be like a Wendy's, like a Taco Bell out there, right? And line and line and line in 11 Mile, which is 35 miles, it's a two-way, it's just two lanes each way, it's not much to go over anywhere. So just keep that in mind, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Bello, 2211 Princeton. Our big concern, my wife and I's big concern, is this wall that's going to go up in our backyard. What is it going to be made of? How tall is it? We already have an eight-foot fence there that we love. Are we going to lose that? Would rather not. If there's some way both a wall and a fence can coexist, that would be great. But, you know, we also have some concerns that Teresa has and that Dave and Denise have, but the wall is the big thing. And my wife was very clear, you know, no wall looks like a prison. I love my fence. Thank you.
My name is Mary Ann Noble. I'm 82 years old, and so I have tremors, so I'll do a little rock and roll. I live at two doors down, from them around, two doors down. The Mason's parking lot is behind my house. I spent $2,600 putting up a vinyl fence, which had a little problems with the Masonic temple, but the neighbors on both sides did it, so now everybody loves our white vinyl fence. So I want to know, with the additional parking, are they going to park in the Masonic temple? And if so, is that going to cause a problem to my fence? Or are they going to build a new wall behind or over my existing fence? Which, no way, I paid $2,600. I'm a senior citizen, I ain't got that kind of money.
Thank you. Anybody else? I for one did not see the fences being the big issue here, so thank you for your comments very much. I guess it comes to us, then.
Mr. Vice Chair, I can clarify a few things from public comment if you want.
Yeah, yeah, please, if you would, I'm sorry.
Number one, in terms of a drive-through, that wouldn't be allowed in this zoning district.
No, absolutely not.
So that's not even an option unless the zoning changed, which, and that would absolutely be a special land use, and there's probably not room on site for the circulation for it. In terms of the fence, you all have the ability to waive or modify those requirements for a masonry wall, a screening wall, that's a masonry, a masonry wall construction, based on the existing characteristics. So between the easements and the fences that are existing, I think that there's probably some things for you to mull over and talk about amongst yourselves.
Absolutely.
And then, did want to point out that the, it is, well, number one, I have a site plan up here, if people want to look at it, and it's also in the pack, in the public packet, that you could download off the site and look at. And, but at the same time, wanted to point out that there is a proposed shared parking agreement with the Masonic temple for employee parking to be used on the, and it's the row of parking that's directly adjacent to the building where the proposed mural would be, the blank wall.
Yep, and I think, like I said earlier, I didn't see the wall, the fences being the big issue. It's going to take, going to have to wander out there and look at the situation out there. And luckily, it's just a discussion item tonight, so I'd like everybody to ponder that one. You know, we typically don't allow the division to be a fence. We want something substantial, masonry, usually six feet high. That's not, that's not always the case. But there may be some merit here. Again, we have to look at it, and there may be some merit here with the, not, you know, is the sewer right underneath the middle of the...
I'll be looking at it.
I'll have to look again.
Could you direct it to us to the page that would show that?
And Mr. Chair, while Megan's looking at that, may I make a comment as well?
Please.
From a timing standpoint, the gentleman brought the timing. We have been discussing the policies around permitting this use now, since the vote in 2018, but the scores were just solidified at the city council meeting on January 18th, and this is the, so we did not know exactly where the facilities would be, really, until this point. We went through an appeals process, a scoring process, all of which culminated in the council's decision on January 18th. So that is, this is the first opportunity that we've had to notice the individuals, now that we actually have sites that we're dealing with, as opposed to just talking at the general concept level on permitting these uses. So I just want to clarify timeline for...
To the gentleman who asked about the notification.
For the general, and then, as you said, the thousands watching at home as well.
The thousands watching at home.
So they understand the timeline that we've operated under up to this point.
Okay.
I think the gentleman might benefit from...
I think the gentleman might benefit from us reminding that, that we're not making a decision tonight.
Yeah.
That's in the future.
Yep. And I blew right by the, the drawing, I usually see things like that, where the sewer line is, there's a lot of drawings in this.
The sheet two.
Sheet two, thank you.
The second one in the set.
The second one in the set?
It is right on the property line.
Go right in the back.
Okay, which, it's way in the back.
No, I, I wonder if-
It's the engineering.
It's the engineering page, yeah. Engineering site plan?
Yeah.
Six of fifteen.
Six of fifteen.
I must have stapled them in the wrong order.
The survey's on the fourth sheet of the set.
The fourth sheet, okay.
And it, it is directly in the middle of that vacated alley.
Right on the prop, so to speak, right on the property line, that's not it. Why am I not, I must have missed.
And then, it's noted in, um-
It's four of fifteen, when you look in the title block.
Oh, four of fifteen, I'm on six of fifteen.
Right on the property line.
Well, that's there, no, that's their drain, I'm on for the sewer.
This doesn't show us any fence.
There it is, sanitary, there it is, okay, okay.
Yeah, it says point one feet from-
Yep, okay, I got it, thank you. I blew right by that.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Chair.
Okay, hold, hold up everybody, please, shh, please.
Just wanna note that, um, there's a letter from Department of Public Works that's dated January twenty-eighth, and it's item six, um, where it's noted from Derek Schuler, "An existing sewer is shown on the north side of the property. Either the existing easement shall be shown via title documentation, documentation, and the applicant will need to grant half width of a ten-foot public wide easement for this UCD utility." And then it goes on to say, "Sample easements can be provided. Note, new physical obstructions like a screening wall shall not be placed within the easement to allow future city maintenance and repair." And so this was one issue that was discussed.
We do that all the time. So, okay.
So I think what happened was when the alley was vacated, the easement that was there for the sewer pipe was vacated as well inadvertently, and so the city's trying to, site plan by site plan, reestablish.
And the dis- the difference here is usually the easements for overhead power lines. Here we have a sewer underground and probably the power line, so that's the difference.
And this is not abandoned, right? Just wanna make, like-
No, this is, this is-
Okay, just making sure, that's very common, could not be abandoned.
There's stuff going through that pipe.
Okay.
Okay, okay. That'll be something we'll have to have some discussion about, so, okay, at this point, uh, what else do we, we talked about?
Regarding, um, traffic, um, I don't, I guess I'm not super familiar with if TIA's, traffic impact analysis are usually required for site plans here, cuz so far, I haven't been involved with anything like that. But, um, this is a new area, I think, where these type of businesses get consult, you know, like Starbucks and Wendy's and stuff, they usually have TIA's, but, um-
I think this can require them, can't it?
We can request.
We can require it, okay.
We can require.
You know, and then, and, you know, the, the only other-
It'll be a while.
The, the only other piece of that is whatever the TIA shows, um, like, besides traffic engineering, like enforcement, backing up traffic on Eleven Mile becomes an issue, that's an enforcement issue, generally, so, um-
There's a lot of that going on along Eleven Mile, in the residential.
Right, yeah, yeah, so like-
Commercial.
Yeah, when other businesses, the drive-throughs back up, though.
Right.
It's really an enforcement issue, so.
Okay.
But yeah, that's just a note for our future.
Something we can. Most, most communities rego- require traffic impact studies, or, um, a lot of that's for, uh, 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 new construction, larger sites, um, or major, um, um-
Big box stores.
Big, but, well, yeah, big box, but, you know, if there's a change of use, and this is a change of use also. So, uh, and the fact that it is nine, ten AM to nine PM brings that into play, and, uh, yeah, I don't really, I don't know what the, um, traffic pattern is for one of these facilities, I have no idea.
So I took a field trip. Um, on Monday, in the middle of the day, I went and visited a couple places in Ferndale. I will say, the one that I went into had six sales counters, this one has ten. They have about twenty-eight, it looks like, parking spaces that were about ninety, ninety-five percent full, I mean, we had to drive around, and there was circulation to be able to drive around.
What time of day was this?
Noon, and-
On a Monday?
That was, um, on a Monday, and that was, you know, like, they pushed that they have specials at that time, cuz it's their slow time. I picked this place because I saw many Facebook comments about traffic backing up on their main street, um, at their busier times. So, I, when I looked again at this afterwards, I went, I, I can't see that this being enough parking. First off, if you figure you have ten retail counters going and thirteen waiting spaces, probably not gonna have thirteen people in those waiting spaces, but maybe. You're gonna have a salesperson at every one of those counters, you're gonna have somebody checking them in, you're going to have a security guard, and probably a manager.
Well, they say they have, they have twelve employees working, or thirteen, whatever the number was.
So, it, it's a lot, this, you know, um, and I, when I look at this, I can't see traffic not backing up on Eleven Mile from it. And, you know, and, and that's even without knowing what rapid checkout is, is that I like pull in and, you know, bring it out to the car, right? Cuz that just adds another layer where you're not going in, but it's another car going in there. And the circulation isn't super great in the site plan for being able to get in and out very easily. My one added extra thing is if I'm looking at this additional suite, the in, in warehouse or what have you, extra, there's a big overhead door, which would make me think that you would be, either have a truck to load in or out, or be moving big equipment, but that, a truck can't actually do that there, because that's the turnaround spot here. So, I'm not, on, you know, if there's a truck there loading into his space, or her space, um, then you don't have that turnaround space, this feels, it feels like not enough parking for the amount of business. And yay, I mean, I imagine it's going to be very busy, um, but between the parking and the lack of flow, I think, which bothers me more than the parking, is, is there's no great circulation to be able to easily get in and out. And a shared parking agreement for three years makes me really nervous. Cuz if that falls apart in three years, then we're in an even worse shape. I think those are the comments I have right now. Oh, and where is the snow gonna go? Cuz there's not really a great green area to push it off in this.
You want us to answer?
I would love it, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Some of the questions, the snow, we're aware of the, um, so Jamie, one of our partners here, contracted, or found a company who we can contract with that'll actually load it onto a truck and take it away, cuz we're aware that we can't cover up one of our spots, so we've thought about that in the plan. As far as the shared parking agreement, I mean, we're, we're well aware, the parking, you know, is, while it complies with the ordinance, you know, it's, it's just right there, so, uh, the shared parking agreement, I believe we have, uh, two options to renew for an additional three years.
If both parties agree, right?
Uh, I'll, I'll have to go back, and it was, it's been a while since we signed it, so I'll have to go back and review.
It's not gonna be a one-sided, uh, decision, so.
One option to renew, I mean, you'd always have the joint-party option to renew, but I believe we do have the option to renew, you know, one-sided. And I'll address that when we come back for our full review. We're looking for other parking options, you know, I know our neighbors, we've already spoken to them on the other side, they don't use their parking, they have like one truck that, that pulls in there, so they've been very agreeable to another, you know, another agreement with us. You know, it's, it's hard to execute these agreements and get locked into things when we don't have approvals. You know, we're looking to run a long-term business where, like I said, we're a benefit to the community, we, we don't wanna have traffic backed up for multiple reasons, we don't want our customers to, you know, be in line in traffic either, because that'll drive them away, so, just as a business decision, we don't, we don't want that either. So these are all issues we were aware of, um, you know. The size of the lot is the size of the lot, and the requirements of the size of parking spots are, you know, what they are. We, we've complied with all of that, and that's, you know, that's what we have to do. I'd love to hear more ideas on the cer- are, are you talking about the circulation of folks inside the, the business?
No, 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 um, I mean, that seems pretty standard from my field trips. I, I mean, as far as, as parking, I feel like, you know, one car pulls in and goes, oh, I think I can make it down, oh wait, I can't park in this clear spot, and this other car's behind it, and now we're, we're juggling cars, and somebody's in this parallel spot trying to move. I feel like that's easily gonna be problematic quickly.
The, the, as regarding the tenant suite, you know, we, the city, you know, part of the merit system was to have a, a tenant suite, and we realized we are in the, in the industrial zone, so, you know, we have a lot of thoughts of cool things to put in there, but i- in the end, you know, we have to fit it for an industrial tenant, because that's, you know, the permitted use there is industrial, so that's why we have the roll-up door, but there's no proposed tenant yet, so, you know, it's, it's kind of just a boxed-out suite. We don't know the use, but it's just gonna be one of the permitted use is in that zone, that's why it's, it's designed the way it is.
Just one thing to add, you mentioned our employees, we are planning to have them all park off-site. We are actively looking for a corporate office in Berkeley on Eleven Mile to house all of them and shuttle them back and forth, but we will try our best, we're very active with our neighbors to try and get better parking. Uh, so for our next meeting, we will hopefully have a better story to tell you. The Masons are agreeable to be here in front of us and talk with you all, if you wanna talk with them about our shared parking agreement. Uh, so maybe some confidence with the Masons, and we are actively trying to amend what we have with them to make it more amenable to the city and take advantage of the forty-plus spots they actually have there that never get used. So, Mr. Brodsky's building, who is, you know, east of us, uh, we're also actively trying to negotiate a contract. So, I'm seeing fifty spots, you know, that are available to make this business very workable for Eleven Mile, uh, plus the notion of rapid checkout, so rapid checkout in cannabis, you're allowed to actually make e-commerce transactions, you just can't actually, uh, pay, cuz you can't use a credit card. But you do have the notion of actually making an online order and showing up, quickly getting out of there after getting your prepared order, after we digitally communicate to make sure their time is very efficiently used. So, we have a lot of planning going on, we've been doing it for over two years now, so, uh, for the reason Danny said, we, you know, we now have four other businesses potentially to compete with, so, traffic that you wanna talk about, imagine there was five, would be the highest per square mile in the entire state, at one point nine dispensaries. You have the highest point winner here that basically are just regular guys that came in and worked their butt off to earn this, so you have normal business people here trying to do good for the community. Five would be a very big detriment to the city of Berkeley in terms of traffic. But I, you know, there's not really anything I'm gonna say to you all to make you happy, uh, but you should-
It's hours, or it's hours, this is like a small-town community.
I can't address that.
We're gonna, we're gonna talk about that.
Uh, but I do wanna say some, you should look at research in other states and what happened with real estate value. All right, I won't talk, okay, sorry. That's all I have to say about parking, uh, but we are very active to make it better, and, uh, we're trying our best.
I, I have one question about parking. Did you just say you wanted fifty spots, and you only have twenty-three?
I said, I see the fifty spots are there, they're just not being used.
How many do your other locations have? Are they the similar size, or?
I'm just talking about the Masonic lot.
No, I'm saying your other operations, do you have?
So in Flint, we have a facility that's forty-nine thousand square feet, so it's-
Doesn't really compare.
Much larger parking requirement for a hundred-plus employees.
All right, thanks.
One more thing I forgot to mention on the parking, we, uh, as part of our plan, again, because we're aware, aware of the issue, we're gonna, we've planned to run incentives for employees. We're gonna pay the first ten dollars of any Uber, you know, any ride-share app that they use per day, so we're gonna incentivize them to take, um, you know, Ubers and Lifts to work, so that we don't have to utilize those spots. And also, monthly incentives for the employees who, you know, bike to work the most, we have a lot of bike park in there. So, again, we're, we're trying to do our best within the rules, the guidelines that were given, and, um, you know, it's, it's a constant thing we're gonna focus on, because, you know, we're, we're well aware of our neighbors.
Anybody else?
Sure, I'll go. I too have a concern about circulation and the parking. Thirteen spots, I know that, that meets our, the ordinance. In my, my other life, I've designed a few of those, and thirteen spots is not a whole lot for this, this type of use. Also, pulling in and not having a clear space to turn around, and it's striped out, but when it's snowy, or it's just, the lot's full of cars, it's hard for somebody pulling in from Eleven Mile, seeing if, you know, I'm just gonna pull ahead and, you know, see if there's a parking space. Oh, I get there, and it's, it's actually a turnaround spot, and then they're, they're trying to back out. Also, the, the dumpsters in the location that would not be able to be serviced by a garbage truck. Yes, that's, that's the biggest thing I see, um, apart from the, the screen wall slash fence, or whatever we decide to do with that, but the circulation in the parking really does seem to me to be concerning. We don't want people backing up onto Eleven Mile and causing a situation like the Starbucks on Woodward.
It's absolutely true.
Would it be useful to, to look at data, do you have any data on the average amount of time a customer would spend at your facility? It was mentioned you can order online, I mean, do you have any, uh, do you have any empirical data?
There's a ton of resources out there for sure, we, we don't know what our averages will be, we could just kinda show you like Ferndale's area or other, but there's, you'd have to find it, we don't have anything at, at hand.
Okay.
There's, there's by far with TIA's trip generation graphs that can estimate all this based on square footage, use, all of that. And this is a brand-new type of use, so I'm sure there's a ton out there on this already that will provide us the data and answer, really, as far as number of trips that this generates. Yeah, circulation's a sort of a different issue, but there are quite a few turning templates I saw in there, so like, you had that question about the truck one, I, I thought I saw some of that. Like, there's a whole pack on how each spot pulls in and out.
Yeah, those are for passenger cars, though, I'm talking about a, I'm talking about a garbage truck being able to-
That was not for a, a garbage truck.
Oh, okay, I didn't think that far.
A garbage truck would not be able to pull in, and one of those front loader ones would not be able to make that ninety-degree angle, even with the clearest turnaround space behind it.
And the spot that they have blocked out is actually the opening to the door, it looks like, the roll-up door.
Industrial tenant.
So if that guy's having a delivery, might not work as well, might land lock it.
Any more?
Um, the lighting issue, I think there was a note, that there's like twenty-four lights. Um, is there a reason there has to be that many, or? I think it was from DPW or somebody, I read a note about regarding the number of lights.
Yeah, so the, the lighting plan was designed to do three things. One, light the parking, uh, and the mural along the west facade, uh, the, the Mason's spots that they have the shared parking agreement with. The ordinance has a requirement for a minimum number of foot candles per square foot for parking. You know, light each entrance, uh, so we have like a sconce at each pedestrian entry and exit door. Um, and then the covered pedestrian exterior walkway that leads to the front doors has some pendants, so all the lighting is, is shielded, it's either directed straight down or back towards the building. We provided the photometric plan with the, there's also elevations that kinda show what each elevation, how it would be lit with the proposed lighting. And then as far as the dumpster, the waste management plan that we had to put together as part of the application documents, we stated that the, uh, pickups would be before business hours, and the dumpster would be rolled out from the enclosure to face the drive aisle, to face Eleven Mile. And then, I would just while I'm up here, address some of the other comments, the, the green belt that you guys are currently maintaining. Currently, the, the wall that's back there is at the old property line. We're proposing to remove that wall and build the do- We're proposing to remove that wall and build the new six-foot wall, which is required for the ordinance, uh, at the new, at the new property line since the alley was vacated. So you wouldn't be having to maintain any green space that's not on your property anymore. And as far as the easement for the sewer, um, you know, we put the, we included the six-foot masonry wall because that's what the ordinance requires to screen from residential for a parking lot. If you guys were amenable to, uh, Arbe Vitae or some other natural screening device, we'd be certainly open to that as well. If, if we could be granted a, a variance from the requirement of the ordinance.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, um, and I'm one person. But I think the city is gonna be looking for a barrier wall of some sort. I don't think a planting will, um, probably suffice. Now, there's all the fencing involved and again, I, I can't, I can't answer it intelligently now because, uh, I, I didn't pay enough attention to it at this point. I didn't see this as being the, a big issue. So that's something we'll have to look at prior to you folks, uh, coming back here for a submission. And have some ideas. But I think rather than, you know, a lot of communities will allow a berm and plantings in lieu of a wall. And that, that's fine if you have real estate. Here, we don't really have the real estate. And I do think that between an industrial use and a residential use, we do want a solid barrier of some sort rather than plantings. Just, I'm throwing that out. So that's something we'll discuss later on. What and where it is, is a different subject.
We talked about this in terms of the twelve-mile, uh, downtown district. And I remember advocating for flexibility in terms of barriers.
There is, but there's real estate back there for, that's, we talked about if we started losing a couple homes along there, you know, extending them. And having something that's thirty, twenty, thirty, forty feet deep as a barrier. Here, we don't have that luxury. Just don't have the real estate for it. So that's an issue. So that's something we're all gonna have to ponder.
And just so I'm clear, um, building a, whatever type of fence it is, building it right on the new property line created by the vacated easement. That puts it right over the sewer?
That's my understanding. It's pretty much.
Puts it right over the sewer, okay.
And I think DPW is amenable to, there's some sort of language in the easement that you can put a structure over it. But if we need to go in, that structure comes down and we're not responsible for replacing it.
Right, at your own risk.
As long as it's deep enough, the foundations. I, I don't know if we know, or do we know how deep the sewer is? I don't remember.
Uh, I didn't see the, I didn't, I didn't look at the inverts or if they were on there.
And, and, and we can continue to talk to DPW about that, but that's a good detail to follow up with them about is how deep are the footings for a masonry wall?
We'd probably like to look-
Where's the pipe? Where will we start having interference with it, just in terms of function?
And it's also disturbed soil every time they have to change it and that wreaks havoc on linear footings.
It, it might be, if, if they did continue, say, just for sake of argument, a vinyl fence as opposed to a screen wall. The vinyl fence would have a much limited foundation because you'd just have one every six feet or eight feet, whatever it is. Versus the screen wall foundation, which would be the length of the, the wall. Maybe it could match the screen, the vinyl fence that is up already. All right, I'll end.
And a quick notice, no, because it popped into my head. If, if what they're presenting to us is that they are going to truck the snow out. Based on my personal experience from the last five years, that's what was suggested to Harvard Commons and they have not done that in five years. So I would want something very clear, very specific, drawn up with the city that leaves no five years of please move it, please move it before somebody's ticketed.
Or a vinyl fence gets knocked over.
Getting back to the wall, um, I, I, I'm not sure we, I, I would like to know more from DPW about the options. And, you know, uh, we, we don't want to impose undue costs on the city for having to remove a wall either if, if there's-
Oh, they just, they just tear it up and it's up to the owner to put it back in. So, uh, yeah, typically, so.
But I mean, it, it's a mess when you-
It is.
So I'd like to know more about what our choices are vis-à-vis DPW. In terms of the traffic, uh, the, the circulation and the capacity. Is it, is it realistic to, uh, require the applicant to provide studies to us?
He did say that.
We can do it. We can, we can ask them to do that. Again, this is something new. And, uh, they're looking for high volume, which means high-volume traffic.
I'd be in favor of it i- if, if, if there's no, no prob- no, like practical problems. Connected with the length or the expense or, or, or that that would preclude it.
No, they're not. Astronomically, you know, no one wants to hire new consultants to do new reports if they don't have to, but we're within our right to ask for a traffic study. And I think that's warranted here because this is something new and we're making a decision eventually. Anybody else?
I mean, the only, you know, the, the green infrastructure seems amazing that's on here. I would point that out.
I have some questions about it, but that's fine.
Yeah, maintenance of it maybe.
Yeah, maintenance of that, uh, so those, the, the concrete chunk is your pavement, right? The, the-
So the, the actual parking surface where the lot or where the-
That's the parking surface?
No, that's the walk surface.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I thought that'd be the parking surface. Have you looked at the long?
The other one is the turf paper that is in kind of that back alley area.
Well, that's from the back. Okay, so what is your, uh, are you doing just regular concrete out here then for the main parking?
Permeable.
Permeable concrete. Have you looked into the, uh, longevity of that product and our clay soil here?
Yeah, so we-
That does not perk?
So McDowell, we have a geotechnical report from McDowell and they-
I saw it. I did not read it, sorry.
They suggested, uh, and this, this information, it will be included in, um, Giffel's, uh, you know, final site plan. But there's basically a, a thirty-one inch layer of permeable materials above the clay. Uh, and that's based on the recommendation from McDowell. So, yeah. Because of the clay, there's a lot of, a lot of layering that has to occur to make it feasible. But again, that was part of the merit-based point.
And there's underdrain too. So basically, I, my understanding of pervious pavement is that it needs to be swept with like a vacuum truck? Is that something that would, that's under consideration, I guess, for you guys?
Yeah, we've actually been in touch with the, the Michigan Concrete Institute. Cause it's, it's really all about how you install that stuff and how you maintain it. So we would make sure to have a contractor that knows what they're doing with it, uh, install it properly according to the Concrete Institute's instructions. And then maintain it according to their recommendations as well.
I, I commend you for going in this direction. And, uh, in a sense, the maintenance issues are not really our, our bailiwick. We kind of go outside our bailiwick sometimes just to make sure the applicant knows what they're getting into. But you, I think you obviously do. And, uh, you know, then there's us and then there's enforcement down the line. But, um, I commend you for, for taking these extra steps. And I, I wanted to ask about the roof. Um, what, what do you have to do to support that roof that, that would be different?
We, we actually are, we actually have to, so right now it's, it's open web steel trusses, uh, that were designed, you know, for regular snow load. And the, the weight of the roof material itself, we, because of the added load of the green roof and when it's absorbing water, that added weight. We're tearing off the existing roof, uh, putting new wide flange beams that can support thirty pounds per square foot of, for the green roof. And, yeah, so we wouldn't be up here if, if we hadn't have done all these things. Because the merit ba- voice-based point system had a lot of those items in it about green infrastructure. That goes, a lot of it goes in line with the master plan that was recently approved. And so, yeah, we wouldn't even have gotten this far if we hadn't have committed to, to doing those types of things.
Anybody else have a couple of comments if nobody else does?
Throw this out here while I'm looking at these again closer. The, the lighting bollards on Eleven Mile, is that, I mean, they look nice and everything. I'm just curious to what? Right away, just making sure that we're allowed to approve that if that's going in like that.
I discussed that with the city attorney because that was something that came up during the, um, applicant review meeting that we had last Wednesday. And, um, from what he said, they, we would treat it just like anything else in the right of way. And that was something that was, again, improvements in the right of way were in the merit-based checklist. Um, and so that's the reason that they were brought forward.
Is Eleven Mile or, uh, county or city road?
County Street, county.
County.
It's county. Cause the road commission does have requirements that anything above ground has to be so many feet off the back of curb.
Yeah, they'll have to get a road commission permit for all these things.
Yeah.
Multiple jurisdictions.
Okay, I have a couple of comments. Um, and. The accessible path from your barrier free, and the building department will look into this. You got a couple of bike racks there and things. Um, I would just double check that you can maintain your accessible path into the building. Cause bicycles aren't always parked neatly. And, um, I suppose they can go out to the public sidewalk and all that, but just, just double check that. It took me a while to figure out what the heck was going on here. A couple of dotted lines showing some demolition would help, uh, what you're, uh, demoing on the building. I figured it, we know it now, but I, I was looking at this appendage. Is that a new appendage, you know, at the, at the industrial thing? So a couple dotted lines pointing out what you're demo- demoing would, would go a long way. Is that three-foot-ten path a little narrow? Along underneath that recovered walkway? And also, uh, are you worried about the cars running into your little planters?
The planters will have-
They say have steel pipes in them, but doesn't mean they're gonna get damaged in some way. I'm just, just throwing that out. You have a twenty-foot car depth there. Nobody likes parking blocks, but just throwing that out. You can tell what I do for a living. So, uh-
Are, are parking blocks allowed in Berkeley? I know Ferndale doesn't allow them.
I don't, I've never seen anything that's saying we don't like them. We don't want them if you don't have to. And you don't want them if you don't have to because they're trash collectors and they always get, you know, everybody goes until they hit the- People drive until they hit something, whether it's a curb or a parking block. Maybe, maybe you reduce the, uh, like if you were here earlier, we suggested on the first applicant to reduce ver- uh, sorry. Reduce the parking spaces to eighteen feet and extend the, the curb out. Then those things are back a couple of feet, so less likely.
In terms of, of how much kind of minutia we could do here with the site plan, is two feet, is that allowable or like what?
We, we, all communities will allow you, when you're up against a curb of landscaping or sidewalk, uh, to add two feet to the sidewalk. Make it a seven-foot walk instead of five foot, which is typical, but, and reduce the parking space by two feet for the overhang of the car. I don't know if two feet's enough for all the cars.
So in, in terms of, uh, like supportive parking agreements, if we come back next, like how, how does that play into your decision-making? Like, they're not a part of the site plan, so what, and we're doing them for our business and for the community and neighbors. So like, what is your guidance on how to do this?
Okay, I guess my opinion is, is you've heard a lot of concerns, which I share, about your number of parking spaces. You, you're looking for a gangbusters business and we're all for that. There are businesses that do great business in our town and other towns and Starbucks came up on, on Woodward. Now, it's a drive-through. It's a little different animal. Taco Bell on Coolidge has an issue. We've had issues on Greenfield Road with the, uh, the virus testing and stuff, people blocking the road. Little Caesar's, thank you very much. Little Caesar's at Harvard has been an issue. Well, I don't even want to talk about Vincenta Garage. So, uh, we do have issues and with a lot of the neighbors here across the street. It's not right for them to put up with this potential mess in traffic. So we're probably gonna ask you to do a traffic study, impact study. I agree. I don't think your twenty-three spaces is enough. It fits our ordinance for retail, for commercial. But for the kind of retail you're doing, and that's my opinion, I don't know. I, I don't think that's enough and the circulation is, is not real swift in your parking lot, but you have the space you have. You do what you can do. So we'll probably suggest and maybe make a requirement that you do a traffic impact study, um, uh, for this project. And a parking study. I mean, that's all part of it. Cause you do have neighbors, not only behind you that we've talked a lot about, but you have neighbors across the street. It's another community. And, um, um, it's very important. So I'm just making suggestions because this is what I do. And, um, okay, we determined that is not. Let me go through here.
Finish that comment I-
Sure. I do, you know, in, in terms of changing things, we are amenable to doing things to-
Good.
Better what we can. So I hope you all know we're, we're agreeable to doing things if they allow us to.
Alright, but we're just, we've heard a lot of comments from the neighbors. The residential neighbors and their, their comments do matter. And again, I, the first thing I said, this is new to us and it's new to Berkeley and us. And, um, so everybody's a little bit on edge about the volume of traffic. And again, throw away, you know, toss aside, you know, what it is, what the business is, that doesn't matter here. But the amount of traffic and the volume, I think, is, is something that we're all very concerned about. And I, we wish you all the success, of course. Nothing, you know, nothing better than a successful business. But you can't, it, it, it really hurts when you start impacting neighbors, especially residential neighbors. Cause they are the backbone of our town. We're a bedroom community. And, um, they, that, that's very important to us.
And while we recognize that you meet minimum parking requirements, you know, the numbers under the ordinance. So we, part of our criteria for site plan approval is, you know, we have to consider the welfare of the community. That's a, that's-
Absolutely.
Especially in our ordinance. So, so we, we do have discretion, I think, to, to, um, to, to make reasonable requests, you know, to, that are realistic for the, the kind of business that you envision doing, so.
On your floor plan, which is sheet one oh one, um, so you don't have any plans to absorb this nine or seven-hundred-and-eighty square feet into your business? Okay. How do you do your deliveries? Do you have a, you know?
So there's a radius for delivery, typically twenty or thirty-five miles is what businesses in the state do.
I'm sorry, I, I meant, I, I, uh, bringing product and materials into your store.
Yeah, so we'll have drivers dedicated with dedicated spots for those employees as they're designated. So they'll actually have an inventory dedicated person just for delivery. And that goes on in the workflow in the back. You can see the secure access area.
So they're gonna come up, they're parking in the back and they're gonna walk down the alley here and come in the back door?
That is the plan because it's secure access.
Okay. Is that also a egress point, case of a fire or something?
For-
Yeah, your architect's nodding yes, okay.
Yeah, so that, that's for employees and that's a secure access. That's not for customers.
Right.
So you can kind of see the whole-
But those doors will, in case of, is this building fire suppressed? Okay, no, okay. Um, in case of an emergency, those doors, they are locked right now in normal operations, but they fail open. Okay. Do you have a dead-end corridor issue over here by your customer restroom and check-in? Not my business. We're only concerned about the outside. But as an architect, I can't resist, uh, asking questions. Never, huh?
Never.
I, I, obviously I didn't do an egress plan.
Okay.
Site plan, but I, I've been working on it.
Okay, again, I'm just, just asking questions. So, cause you, the, the building department's gonna be, uh, um, asking that. Now, I looked at the building this evening. And there's scuppers on the sides. Shove the water, collect the water. Shove the water, collect the water and shut it down. The parapet's only about that high from the existing roof surface. How are you gonna fit? Eight inches of roof with your roof rope? And you say replacing the, um, the, the trusses with beams? You know, maybe they're shallower, are you gonna add to the parapet? Uh, but I don't, how thick is this, how thick is this roof from the deck up? You're gonna have a fair amount of insulation just because of energy codes, and you have to have some, uh, there's a section, but there's no detail or no dimension on it. So I don't know if you have enough height. And again, not my business, I'm just throwing that out. So. You're not my client, but I'm just throwing it out. Um, so do you have enough parapet height to support the additional, uh, roof, roof assembly thickness? So, all your equipment is up on top? You don't have any equipment, uh, uh, on, on grade? Okay, no generator?
There, there currently isn't plans for one, but we, we may be adding one.
Have to talk into the microphone, but you said no, the answer is no, not, no, no plans for now.
Not currently, no.
Thank you. Um, so just some comments. I'm a little concerned about the lighting on the west side, you got these, uh, very nice fixtures coming out. Uh, there's two things, and I'll get into the photometrics in a minute. There's two things that come into play at lighting. There's the photometrics, we all know what that is, how much light is thrown into other properties. But there's also the nuisance of the, especially the LEDs, and you can see this in our, if you ever see our library, the west side. The, the children's room has a super bright lights that just lights up the houses across the street like billboards. Okay? Now, if those are inside, there's no shielding or anything required. But that point source of light is very bright. And you have some neighbors here that live behind you. I would take great pains to, not only, not only, you know, the dark sky thing where their, their, you know, lights are shining down, but they're looking up at these fixtures and they see like these stupid lights right here, you know, you look at them, you get half blinded. Those are very intense points of light. So just consider that when you're, when you're, uh, looking at your light fixtures and things, cause that's also a nuisance. Um, and that's something that gets missed a lot. Um, I like your signage on the steel beam, that's kinda cool. So, then photometrics, you got a lot of bleed over into the property. Uh, the residential property, that's not allowed. So you may wanna drop those lights a little bit. And you have bleed over into the right of way, and you know what, I can't remember if that's acceptable or not, I guess I don't.
I didn't see anything.
I don't think that's a big problem. So, uh, but you have a lot of bleed over to the property to the east too. Now, you may eventually want that if you work up a parking agreement with him. You know, for lighting that, that part of the light. But we cannot have, we have to have zero lighting at the property line with the residential. It's only zero point one, but it's still something. So take a look at your, your heights and your fixtures. Uh, Vega fixtures are, are good fixtures, you know, they're slick. That's the manufacturer I think you're using, right? Vega, Vega. They're slick, they look nice, but take a good look at how they're aimed and, and, and the heights and everything. And, um, get rid of that lighting to the, to the north. Uh, those are the, really the comments I have, so, you know, you're, you're looking for our, um, our, uh, recommendations, obviously the traffic is the biggest. Uh, traffic, parking is the biggest situation, I think you're gonna have a lot more cars than twenty-three. I hope you do, I mean, good for you. Um, we've had a, we've had a business that was brought up earlier that had employee parking off-site, and that has not worked, it's never worked. But if you can make it work, that's great. Um, we talked about the lighting, we talked about the sewer, gotta look at the fencing. Um, anything you do along that north property line with lighting and the fencing, and that's just something we'll have to talk about for the, you know, our quality of life for your neighbors behind you. And traffic for your neighbors. There's no residential on either side right there Berkeley, but across the street you have some. Um, is there anything else I left out that anybody would like to add?
Just, the more that I look at it, is there any way to put like, I don't know, I'm trying to figure out what's behind it, but like where you have your glazed tile on the eleven mile side? Just to make that glass instead, or no, isn't that the waiting room area?
It's a waiting room area, isn't it?
I mean, just, I, I don't know, just aesthetically maybe.
Can it have a yellow tint on it, is that acceptable?
Oh, because of the name, probably.
Butter, yeah.
Like a stick of butter.
Yellow company.
Is that your stick of butter?
You can put your butter on the other side.
Are, are, I know that, I mean, is glass a lot protected?
Yeah. I don't know, I kinda like it like that, but that's just an aesthetic thing, I don't know.
I, I just, personal. Um, I think it could be tinted.
Yeah.
I don't see why not, just so it'll give more glass to the front.
Got a lot of glass in that lobby area.
On the one side.
Well, right here, this is all glass, this wall.
Yeah, but nothing on eleven besides a little behind the tree.
But a lot more than they have now, it's an improvement over what they have.
Yeah, now there's.
So, uh.
Now there's nothing.
There are two windows.
Yeah, so, um, overall, you know, it's a fine-looking building, um, and, uh, I don't know if anybody else, did I cover everything that we're gonna be looking for?
Just picking up on the photometrics, I, I noticed this earlier, and, um, your label D, that you, you only have one pole planned? With twenty-foot, um, um, light on it and then, or.
There's one in the south.
Southeast and northeast.
Oh, yeah, okay, D, okay, um, and can you just explain why those are there?
Uh, to achieve the required parking, or the required lighting in the parking lot.
Okay, um, um, you know, if they bleed, if they contribute to the bleed over that we've been talking about?
It contributes to the east, those, all those red numbers you see on the right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the north, the D may contribute a little bit, but it's, a lot of it's what's going on.
So is it?
All those little.
I guess.
Is it realistic to talk about lowering those a little bit, maybe?
Well, if we lower them, then we won't be meeting the requirements for lighting the parking lot. We, we played with this, it wasn't just like we threw this and whatever spit out. Um, we, we, we played around with trying to make sure we were hitting the minimum requirements for the parking lot and trying to avoid as much bleed as possible, but it's, in order to get zero bleed, we weren't meeting the requirements of the minimum requirements for the parking lot.
Those minimum requirements are derived from, from, from what?
The ordinance.
The ordinance, okay, our ordinance.
Yeah.
I, I don't see any zoning ordinance, so, um, in terms of, you know, I, 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 I may have missed it, but I don't see a photometric level required in the parking lot.
I, I don't remember one.
Yeah, I don't remember, I could be wrong too.
The one thing I wanted to note was that, um, it says the level of lighting should not exceed zero point five foot candles in any residential property line, or one, one foot candle at any.
Zero point five, I thought it was zero.
At non-residential property line. Um, and then it also says any luminaire on a pole, stand, or mounted in a building shall have a shield, an adjustable reflector, or a non-protruding diffuser, which should take a lot, like in terms of that point source, that's what that, or that regulation is designed to do.
Say that again, please, Megan, please say that again?
Any luminaire on a pole, stand, or mounted in a building shall have a shield,
Mm-hmm.
an adjustable reflector, and non-protruding diffuser. So, and the pendant lights that they have, they might have the bulb that, that drops down, that would have the point that would look in it. That, so, but if the pole-mounted lights should have a shield on the back, so that that's not visible.
Right.
From any adjacent property.
Right. Yeah, and also, I, I'm talking about the, the lights on the back of the building too.
Yeah.
And also on the west side, you know, they're nice little booms that hang out and they're cool looking and everything, but there's a point source up there, and I didn't look at the height of those. But, uh, just so that, that point source isn't in.
However, well, you know, there is standards for parking lot safety that are in other zoning ordinances that are usually a best practice, especially for a use like this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, safety is also something that you're taking into mind and having a well-lit area.
Absolutely.
Um, and we did talk extensively in the plan review meeting last Wednesday about especially the lights on, um, facing the Masonic Temple, cause it seemed like there was a lot of them, but when you talked about the mural, there's things to look at, and I think the applicant was gonna take a sincere look at your lighting plan and see what you could do.
Okay, fair enough for me.
Is that enough to go on?
Yeah, I think the big question right now is the screen wall, um.
Well, I, I think we're all gonna have to go out there and look at that a little bit, and we hope to get a little advice from, uh, DPW.
DPW, so, um, I think maybe the best thing is if planning commissioners could, if you have any ideas after looking at it, if you could communicate, um, back to me within the next week. I'll go to DPW, but also would, um, as the applicant, look at what you feel would work for your needs. Um, we'll communicate back with you, and then probably at your next site plan review, you're just gonna have to take your best shot. Um, and that might be, um, something that could be passed contingent on, or, um, that might be something, I, I, I would defer to the planning commission, if that was the only outstanding item what they would do. Um, but I think that also every other, um, m- most other uses as yours are gonna have similar challenges in terms of what that screening wall would be. I don't think they're gonna have the same challenge in terms of being an easement, but in terms of backing up to residential yards, what the structures are, and then also dealing with sheet flow, um, in terms of drainage, they're gonna be probably asked to look at some creative design things as well.
And I, and I, I'd like to add to that, you know, the residents, several spoke, they, you know, they have nice fences already. And, uh, we need to respect that too, and maybe that's the answer, maybe the, I, I don't know, I have to go back, we have to go back and look to see what's there now, where it is. And, um, see how we can deal with this.
I think I would like to encourage those residents, especially those who have backyards backing up to there. If there's something that you would prefer to see or not prefer to see, communicate that to the building department so they can incorporate it, or to the bu- you know, so that, that can be incorporated in the conversation too. Cause if you all were like, hey, yeah, we would love our, our provides there, then, you know, maybe the problem is solved, you know? Um, if you all were like, no, we really want a masonry wall, you know, I mean, necess- doesn't necessarily mean it's going to happen, but most certainly if you have an opinion that can be incorporated to help make everybody happy, then, um, please communicate it with the community development.
Give everything to Matt, he likes to.
Might, might consider taking pictures of what you got, your existing, uh, fences and walls, and sending them in to the city, to, uh, Megan and.
Well, I would like all the planning commissioners, uh, to, to take a look at it, cause like I said, this is a little different, unfortunately, we don't usually have a sewer right on the property line.
Our provides would be great, except you, you still have the same problem with, if somebody needs to tear up the sewer.
Well, absolutely.
Tear up a bunch of.
But I do think you want, for security, you want a, a barrier there too. And, um, so, um, that's normally why we do it, so, uh. Just because I've known you.
If everybody was listening to what.
Only because I've known you for thirty years.
Oh, I'm sorry. David Losi, twenty-one eighty-nine Princeton. Um, earlier in the discussions with the fellows over on, uh, on Greenfield, the one gentleman mentioned about he lives by the Coney Island and there's that wall, and then the, you said that there was a telephone pole in the way of, uh, or a utility pole in the way of their wall, so they were gonna have to move the wall towards Greenfield more, it sounded like.
I think they already did that, they already showed that on their plans. The wall can be moved too.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, you know, I mean, that's, that's what happened.
That's an option.
But I'm not saying that that's, because I get all of this parking and all this traffic business too, you know what I mean? And I, it, it makes it difficult, especially with your neighbor to the east. Uh, so, you know, I've already dealt with him many years ago, so, but anyway, what I'm saying is, is where the, the prior owner or prior business that was there, they built the wall exactly where the other wall was. Because they knew, because the DPW had said, you know, after I told them, I said, there's a sewer right there. And my neighbor next door, her backyard had to get dug up where that sewer was, and this was before they split the alley. And nobody at DPW had a clue, except for two guys that were regular crawling through the sewer system and running cameras, and they were the ones that knew it. And the one that's in my backyard that's under my fence now, that, this manhole was buried down in the, stuff in the alley. And they had to raise it up to ground level. And when they did, it was right under my fence, right exactly, you know, and it was part of your drainage. Your drainage goes into, kind of the houses on, on, on Princeton back up to it, except for one, that, there's a big one right.
What we, what we don't wanna create is a fence and a fence, or a wall and a fence like we had at one of those where the owners have to maintain that eighteen inches or two feet. Nobody wants that. So if we can see what's there and look at it.
Yeah.
We have to do some more homework, so we'll.
And I get it, and I, and, you know, I'm for what, I'm not upset about anything, I'm just saying.
Oh, you had it, you did want to speak again, go ahead. Oh, you only get two.
Um, I don't know where the situation is, but, but I read at some point there was a thought process of doing a bike lane in eleven mile as well, all the way from Greenfield to Woodward, so that will even make it even, uh, more of a mess, right? I don't know where that is, but I think it's gonna be still up there. The other thing too is, uh, it's a speed trap, just so you know. But that place is a speed trap, I see cops all the time. All, all the time.
Many of us have personal experience.
There you go. Uh, and the other thing too is, of course, if, if the traffic is bad, then you, you have the, the, the fire department, the, the ambulance, and the, the cops right there as well, so just imagine if your loved one needs a, you know, needs.
Yep, we understand that.
You know, so, needs, uh, needs, uh, needs them, and you have traffic, it's a problem, right? So just gonna have to put those three things out there for you guys to, to, to think about as well.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Can I just say one more? Is that Henley and Berkeley are also main thoroughfares to get to not only Rogers, but also to Berkeley High School? So we do have significant traffic arriving from that.
We're asking for a traffic study, and that has to be taken into account.
And also if you could look at, if there is going to be an agreement with the Masonic Temple, that also goes out to Henley. And my fear for that is that, how do you differentiate, like what is elite space from the Masonic Temple, and then what would be just overflow people parking there anyways? Cause that's where my.
Last thing, the fences that we have there right now, we were allowed to go eight feet on those, not six feet.
That could be, yeah.
Eight, eight foot on those, which, which really, was there because our backyard comes down from there, that alley goes, the old alley goes up, so our backyards are actually down further, so, you know.
That may be a solution, yeah. Okay, Megan. So, uh, you have some direction?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, I guess I'll be in touch with Megan, but I just, what I, what I don't want to happen is us propose an alternative to the six-foot masonry wall and.
No.
No.
And I have no idea when I'm going up there.
We're, we're, we're happy to propose an alternative to the masonry screen wall, but what I am not wanting to happen is us coming back with an alternative and getting either tabled because we're not complying with what the ordinance says. So I, I think I'll just, we'll just have to be in touch
Yep.
as we revise our drawings and make sure that we're in communication with the proposed alternative and make sure that it's. and make sure that it's acceptable to the commission before going to a vote, you know?
Okay, any liaison reports?
Um, DDA worked on revising their vision and mission statements. Um, really long conversations about Coolidge crosswalks, the DDA would really like to see that come back, and they're really trying to, uh, discuss where, what they could do to make them safer, where they wanna kind of spend money, whether that's bump outs, or, you know. So, they got to a point where they're like, we don't have the experience to make these decisions, we would like to see crosswalks, we need somebody who knows crosswalks to come talk to us and tell us what we can do safely. Um, they're raising the mural funding from twenty-five hundred to four thousand. Um, and they're starting to look at, um, pocket parks and putting some funding into it.
I'm on Parks and Rec, but I wasn't appointed to be a liaison.
Anything interesting with the park?
I, I wasn't able to make the.
Okay, I used to do Parks and Rec, so. Okay, uh, any commissioner staff comments?
I just have a more of a question maybe for Matt, like, with these new centers coming, or any site plan, what happens if we deny the site plan, as we have in other site plans?
Uh, what our ordinance calls for is if we deny a site plan, then the next eligible applicant with the next highest score will then be able to apply.
I think I have one question along there too. I guess I'm wondering how we got to just our basic retail as the parking for this, because, I mean, there's liquor stores, if I look at other communities, they use, you know, medical clinics, or, you know, it's more like one parking spot for a hundred feet, square feet, um, so I'm kind of wondering how we got to where we are.
It's a retail business.
But we have a lot of different things under, I mean, so is,
We don't.
so is liquor stores, but that has a different, that has a different criteria.
We don't have a carve-out for marijuana facilities.
Not yet, no.
No, I mean, it would be good to, to do that.
By the time we get to it, it'll be done.
Some evidence.
Yeah, like I said in the beginning, this is new, it does, so.
Um, I think, to answer your question, Lisa, where did that parking regulations came from? I think that was made as a deterrent back when you first started the checklists in two nineteen, thousand nineteen, in terms of what that parking metric was, because one of the qualifications even apply was that they had to demonstrate that they could satisfy the parking regulations on site, even, but when they went to city council. So, how that metric was decided, I, I was not part of the process and couldn't tell you why it was chosen, but what I can tell you is that it was chosen quite a while ago, um, and so, um, and that was part of the process with city council.
True, yeah, and that's absolutely the case, we looked at some of our peer communities as well and asked what they did. Um, and they had, at the time, the guidance that we had gotten from, from peer communities was that they had, uh, put them under the same standard as the retail location, uh, and we, as we were trying to gauge kind of what it would look like here, um, two hundred and fifty, or, uh, one space for two hundred and fifty square feet, uh, did seem appropriate at the time, and seemed in line with what some of our peer communities, uh, square footage to parking spot ratios look like.
Planning commission was never asked to act on that.
Nope, that, that I don't recall, I, I don't.
Is it possible, you know, we have some of these, you know, uh, I don't think the fencing is giving an issue for the other applicants, hopefully not, but parking's gonna be, be a big issue, that may be something you wanna go back and alert the other applicants that, um, and, and, and circulation, because these are small sites.
Mm-hmm.
So, I have a comment too, are you done, or?
For now.
For now. Um, it's, it's a general comment, I, I, I am a parking hawk, I don't like, I don't like to envision a Berkeley that's paved over with parking lots, really, I'm getting emotional now. Um, so, um, I would like to see the city do much more to encourage shared parking. Um, people are very leery about shared parking, and we have a checkered history when it comes to shared parking. But I think if the city took more, a more proactive role, maybe we could make it work better. Um, I'm, you know, I'm thinking about things like, um, recorded reciprocal easements, or something like that. They wouldn't have to run with the land, they could, you could write them up so they'd terminate when the, when a, when a property was sold or a business changed, but, but if, you know, if you had something in place that people had to follow and couldn't just terminate on a whim, or, um, you know, over some silly dispute, that would, that would help. I, we, we have so much parking space that's wasted in this town, and, uh, I just, I think it's a, I think it's a big problem, myself.
Well, I can respond to that, I, I, I might disagree, because in, in my tenure here, there have been several, a number of shared parking agreements, and I think they've worked very well. There's one very obvious case that did not work, and that never came to us.
I said.
That's something that didn't come to us until after the fact.
I, that's why I use the word checkered.
Yes, okay. But generally, um, of the, my first meeting here, almost twenty-two years ago, was a shared parking agreement, and, and, uh.
It, it can work.
Oh, they, they do work, a lot of them work, there's several of them, maybe they're not all working, but that one you gotta throw out, because that, that was not, that did not come to us, and if it did, it wouldn't have happened. So, uh, and you were, several of us were here when that happened.
I was here.
You know what's weird about the, the retail qualification for the parking? Is that with the, with, with you can order online, and you can just drive to the parking lot, and they come out to your window, that is in a way a drive-through.
It is, it is.
So I think that's almost, it skews the, what the retail number is, the two hundred and twenty-five, um, a space per every two hundred and twenty-five square feet, I think it is. Um, you, you got this extra addition of people just coming in and just, just driving into the parking lot and picking up their stuff and then leaving, where you wouldn't have that if you went to, um, a Verizon cellphone store or something, you know? You have to go into the store, so the, the interaction, I guess there's just more. There's more people showing up, and it's not necessarily reflected in that two hundred and twenty-five, one space per two hundred and twenty-five square feet.
But.
That's a very good point.
That would be quicker turnaround than your typical drive-through.
But another car.
But it's another vehicle.
But it's another vehicle.
But, well.
Trying to get in when the other one's getting out.
Don't know, don't know.
And like I said, I'll say it for the tenth time, this is new to us.
I mean, and when I did my field trip, I, I went into one and drove around three other ones, right? Every one of those lots were very full on a Monday at noon. So, thinking of Fridays or Saturdays, um, I, I can very easily believe those things that I've been reading on, on different Facebook pages about, um, cars lining up on, on the streets because they can't park it. But there's, when there's more, then there's probably less business too, because it's competition, maybe.
I mean, where I went, there's like, one of the places has like three of them, within like a, a minute and a half drive, right? It's like boom, boom, and around the corner, there's another one here.
Um, anybody else? One comment was made tonight, and I don't remember who made it, that, uh, five facilities in a community our size is considered a lot. And you know how I feel about all this, of the decision that was made, so, um, take that for what it's worth, but I don't think that was a, the right direction for Berkeley.
And, and one other point of clarification, we have no input on hours of operation, correct? This is.
We can have limits, but nine o'clock is within.
Right, but planning commission can't dictate that.
Planning commission in the past, no, you know, I'll take that back up.
If it was.
It was Taco Bell wanted to be open until, you know, whatever, thirteen PM or whatever.
If it was a special land use?
Yeah, that's different, yeah, yeah.
The ability based on the ability to place conditions.
Right.
But this is a principal permitted use.
So, that's that.
Mm-hmm, the only conditions you could place would be to enforce something in the.
Yeah, and when we had some, uh, I was just using Taco Bell, you know, it was a special use, but it was a drive-through, it was open until, you know, when. And we did ask them to pull that back.
Is that a special use, land use?
It's a per- principal permitted use.
Yes, it's a principal permitted use in the industrial district in eleven mile, and then, um, well, I think on twelve, it's local business, because that's what East Twelve Mile is.
Yeah.
But it needs a public hearing though, correct?
No, it does not need a public hearing, it's required to be noticed, so everybody in three hundred feet is required to be noticed every, anytime anything dealing with a marijuana provisioning center comes to this body.
And that was part of an enhanced public outreach that was built into the camp, uh, into the ordinances. Uh, we didn't, wouldn't typically notice for, for a site plan, but for this particular industry, we, we adopted some enhanced standards.
Just like Greenfield, the ones that were before you tonight, those were noticed, because anything in the Greenfield district, whether it's a site plan or special, whether it's a principal permitted use or a special land use, is required to be.
And a lot of communities are leaning more and more to that, as are we, because any site plan approval, even though it's permitted, but it's good to let the community, nearby community know about it. Because, you know, what happens is, a person said today, he didn't know about it, and this is the, a lot of citizens, you know, us and ZBA is really their exposure to local government, and more often than not, it's, uh, uh, it's not a good, uh, you know, a relationship, and that's what they see, so, uh, I think that's a good thing to notify people. Okay, with that, I guess I'm looking for a motion. Oh, I'm so, oh, I'm sorry, didn't.
No, no, that's okay, so you have the community development report, um, at your tables, and it's also in the electronic packet, I put it there today, apologized that it wasn't included before. Um, I wanna let you know that we just issued, um, a site plan number six for twenty-twenty-two. Last year, in twenty-twenty-one, you only had four site plans. So, and two are, we have two that are looking for revised and re-semits, and then we have three that are out for review, so that you haven't really even seen yet. Um, one's for facade, and there are for two site plans, and of that six that I mentioned, only two are provisioning centers. Um, there's other things that are coming in as well. Um, so, um, one of the things I would like to add to the work session that we're having on March first is just to really go over your rules of procedure, um, that was supposed to be done in January, but we had such big agendas that I didn't put it on, um, but with the volume that's coming in, I feel like you're getting a lot of information, there's long meetings, you may want to put some parameters on how long meetings would go, um, how many agenda items, things like that.
Oh, I thought you were talking about how badly I run meetings.
No, no. No. And look this over, and if you have any questions, but just know that, um, the community development department and the building department are busy.
Good. Matt, Mister, Mister City Manager, I'm sorry.
I, I have no other additional items for the planning commission this evening, thank you for your, uh, your fortitude and making it this late into the evening.
It's been a while since we ever had a ten o'clock meeting.
It's been a while since we've seen people in the audience again, so.
We like seeing people in the audience.
For coming and, and talking to us.
We like seeing people out there, so, okay, uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Support.
Anybody against it, or I hear a bunch of ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
We're not gonna vote on that at ten o'clock.
He'll be noticed, yeah, if it ever comes back to the planning commission, he'll get another letter in.